Well, welcome to the December 5th Planning Commission meeting. All members are present, let the record reflect. Do you join me in standing for the pledge allegiance?
To the flag of the United States of America, two republics, where we stand as one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Great. Pursuant to council administrative policy, Meeting Rules and Procedures Section 5.2, decorum generally public comments by members of the public are generally limited to five minutes or less time if a larger number of speakers is anticipated or if approved by the chair. Speakers desiring answers to questions should direct them to the Planning Commission and if relevant, they may direct them to the appropriate staff member. Speakers can also follow up directly with staff during regular city business hours. Please file a speaker's card with the Administrative Secretary on the form provided on the counter at the back of the chambers. During this portion of the meeting, those present in the council chambers are permitted to speak on items that are listed under items not on the agenda during this portion of the meeting. Public comments for scheduled agenda items should wait until that time. Zoom participation during this general public comment period will not be accepted. We would like to acknowledge that we have zero general public comments that were sent via email or otherwise for our consideration. Copies of these comments were, would be made available on the city's website on the meeting's information page if there were any. Finally, please note that the commission's sanctions and actions, pardon me, are final unless an appeal is filed with the city clerk within the 10 business calendar days. The next item on the agenda. Yes?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just one quick correction. Ms. Drummond, I think we did believe, or did receive one public comment in writing, but it got caught up in a filter, I believe. Is that correct?
That's correct, however, I placed that underneath the E1 item. So that is on the website as well as on the back counter.
Thank you.
Would you like me to read it?
And through the chair at this time, I have no general public comment cards.
Okay, thank you. At this time, I would like to look at the regular Planning Commission minutes for November 7th, 2023. Commission motion unless contrary or amended. I need a motion.
So moved.
Before we do that.
Yeah, Madam Chair, since I was absent for the November 7th meeting, I will be abstaining from voting.
Very well. So moved.
Second.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Before we get into the agenda, I wanted to acknowledge the commissioners on this panel. This is our last meeting for the year and I wanted to thank each one of them for participating in 2023 agenda items. It has been a year and we have done the service that the city, I would hope, appreciates. So thank you commissioners for your service on this commission for 2023. I want to thank the staff as well for putting these packets together and I certainly want to thank the public who participated, took the time out of their day and evening, some of them very long, to participate in some of these very weighty and lengthy and important agenda items in 2023. So thank you. That being said, I will move on to April. I believe you've already indicated that we have no, I'm opening it up to the public at this time.
Correct, Chairperson Roberts. We have no general public comment speaker cards.
Thank you. Okay, thank you. At this time, I would like to recognize our speaker, Miguel, who will present to us this evening our first and only agenda item. Miguel?
Thank you Commissioner, or Chairperson. And good evening to the planning commissions. Miguel Conchard with the City of Brownwood Planning Division. Good evening to the public. Here to present Lone Tree Way Residential Project, BTSM 9597 and Design Review Application, DR 22-005. The request before you is a recommendation that the city council, or a recommendation that the city council approve the following initial study and mitigative negative declaration, ISMD. The MMRP Mitigation Monitoring and Reporting Program for the MND, vesting tentative subdivision map, number BTSM 9597, and Design Review, DR 22-005. A quick overview of the project. So the location and site description, the proposed project's located at 7590 and 7650 Lone Tree Way. It's two parcels. The project site would be 6.32 acres. The project has a land use designation of residential, very low density, which allows 1.1 to three dwelling units per gross acre with a mid-range of two dwelling units per acre. The project also zoned R1-12, which means that they have to provide a minimum of 12,000 square foot lots. Before is the proposed map, which is proposing 36 lots. The proposed application did come in under SB 330, which it was vested April 2022 and due to the SB 330 vesting, we could only hold the application applicants to those standards that are objective. In this case, the density transition policy within our general plan requires that the applicant provide what are known as buffer lots to buffer the existing residential lots that are in the periphery of the project and it would mean that the applicant would have to propose 20,000 square foot lots on the peripheries of their project to serve as a buffer. The density transition policy, it itself is objective, but there's no objective standard for lot shape and lot dimensions. So the applicant has proposed these, what we call wing lots and these wouldn't meet the requirements, the objective standards of the general plan. These wing lots, as you can see, they're on parcels 33 and 20. They have these wings that are six foot wide and they, in effect, create that buffer that's required by the general plan. The applicant also offered an alternate plan as part of a density bonus request. This alternate plan is proposed without the wing lots and this is assuming that the city grant the waiver to remove these wing lots. This alternate plan also consists of 36 residential lots, a .58 acre public park, private internal road, frontage improvements, and stormwater treatment areas. Real quick on the frontage improvement, so this is the proposed frontage improvements and they consist of dedications for the widening of Lone Tree Way. This includes sidewalk, landscape, median strip, the, a new lane and a bike lane. The, at the, the overall widening is also part of a larger city-initiated CIP project. The applicant and this application would be held to those improvements that are on their frontage and it's going to be the northern portion of Lone Tree Way and the, these improvements would be subject to refunds and shared, the fair share standards. Stormwater treatment areas. These stormwater treatments areas consist of a pervious private roadway. Essentially, the entire road, internal roadway is going to be a pervious material and water would seep through and that's where the stormwater would be treated. Each lot also has pervious driveways, same concept of pervious material for water to seep in and be treated. And all the lots have self-retaining areas in the side yards. These, these water facilities would have to be maintained through an HOA. The project is conditioned for the applicant to establish an HOA to ensure that these, these water treatment areas are maintained. The city won't accept it as a dedication or anything like that. It's going to be the applicant's and HOA's responsibility. Public park. So the application proposes a .58 acre public park. Due to the proposed density, the, the application is a little, little, is a little bit on deficit side of acreage and this is calculated at five acres for 1,000 residents at 3.2 residents per unit. So this would equate to the, to the applicant having to provide a .64 acre park instead of the .58 acre. Therefore, the project is conditioned to increase the, the park side to those, what's required by the general plan, which would be .64 acres. There is a CMU wall along Lone Tree Wave, along the Lone Tree Wave frontage and that's for safety and to prevent, you know, cars jumping the curve and going into the park or anything like that. Affordable housing ordinance. So the project is vested under the 10% for their SB 330 vesting. This means that the application has to provide a 3% very low, 4% low, and 3% moderate income units. This 10% would equal to four units required for the application. The applicant proposes one moderate unit, seen in blue, a duet unit and one of the duet units, the one in yellow, would be dedicated for, or not dedicated, it would be a low income and one unit, and the one that's in orange, is a proposed dedication and if the city were to accept that dedication, it would be, it would count as two units. I'm going to go a little bit more in depth in the duet unit. So duet units are allowed per, or affordable housing ordinance and they're allowed at a reduced square footage on both lot and building size. The low income unit is proposed in yellow and the very low income is proposed in orange. It is going to be offered for dedication. If the city were to accept this dedication, it would count as two units towards the affordable housing ordinance and if the city were to accept this dedication, it would meet the city's affordable housing requirements. Density bonus. So the applicant is also seeking a density bonus and through, in their application, they're not seeking concessions or a higher density. They're only seeking waivers and the applicant proposes five very low income units. The way the applicant's proposing these five very low income units is through what is known as a shared housing building and the shared housing building would be the duet that's in orange and within that shared housing building, there would be five shared housing units. I'm going to go a little bit more in depth about, on the shared housing building. So the shared housing building, it's a new concept allowed through the state density bonus law. It is, it is proposed on the duet unit that is being offered to the city for dedication. With a shared housing building, each bedroom equals one unit and within this particular shared housing building, five units are proposed. Due to this, the project would qualify for a density bonus. A little bit about the shared housing units themselves. State density bonus law requires that each unit have its own kitchen or kitchenette and a bathroom. Each of the five units that are being proposed has its own bathroom. It has a kitchenette and a bedroom. The shared housing building itself has to have a dining area and a kitchen area and shared livable space, which is, which is being proposed as part of this density bonus request. Moving on to a design review, the site. So the site proposes three plans, four elevations. There is a CMU wall at the frontage of the, of the subdivision. Within the site, 10 of the proposed units are going to have side-loaded garages. 14, 14, the, our application also proposes, proposes 14 single-story units as well. The corner lots, one of the design standards that the project is subject to is that they have to wrap around the, the architecture, has to wrap around the corner lots and the applicant didn't propose this, but it's, it is a condition of approval that they would have to meet those objective standards that were in place when they were vested. This would be one of them. Design review standards. So the minimum lot area for, should I go over each one of these guys or? Okay, I just don't want to take up too much time going every, over.
Through the chair, if you can ensure your mic is on so we can pick you up on audio, that would be great.
Sure. I communicated to our speaker presenter that we can utilize the time better with clarifying questions, so you leave over at the packet.
Okay.
Okay?
Thank you. Design review architecture. So as mentioned before, the application proposes four styles. These would be Spanish farmhouse, craftsman, and French country. The materials used and the architectural features are typical of each of the styles and same thing, I could go in greater detail if the questions arise. And then design, the floor plan, so the, the application proposes three floor plans plus each duet. The floor plans range from 2,900 square feet to 38,000, or 3,800 square feet and the duet lots, one of them is 1,900 square feet, the other duet is 2,100 square feet. And once more, I could go in greater detail if need be. Landscaping for the design review portion. So the, the application proposes trees, shrubs, and ground cover. The applicant proposes 15-gallon trees. However, our design standards that the applicant is subject to does require all trees to be in at least 24-inch boxes. So that, that would be the condition of approval, that all trees be in a 24-inch box. Density bonus waivers. So as part of their density bonus application, the applicant proposes or is requesting waivers from the transition lot requirement, lot width, lot depth, front setbacks, inside and rear yard setbacks. And I could go in greater detail for each of these if the questions arise. All right, so options. So for the application to move as, as proposed, city council would have to accept the dedication of that shared housing unit. If city council were to not accept that dedication, then the project wouldn't be in compliance with the density bonus law and therefore it wouldn't be eligible for those waivers that they're seeking, including the waiver to remove those wing lots. So in an effort to, just in case, city council doesn't accept the dedication, we have come up with some options that would allow the applicant to meet the density bonus requirements, also meet our affordable housing requirements, not require redrafting of the map and these, these options would be to constructing an additional duet lot and with this duet lot, the applicant would be able to meet our affordable housing requirements and the, the density bonus requirements. Or option two, what, there's the possibility of constructing a triplex and same scenario, the applicant would be able to meet our requirements and the density bonus requirements and therefore they would still be eligible for density bonus waivers and they would be able to get rid of those wing lots. SEQA, the, the city did prepare a mitigative negative declaration for the project and the, the, I guess I'm indeed did find a few impacts that are part of the MMRP to mitigate for. The project, the SEQA was available to the, to the public for 20 days and no comments were received by the city or no questions were received by, by the city in regards to the SEQA. A, when the SEQA was first written, when it was first initiated, it was for a different number of units. It was for 36. And, you know, of course, the project now is 40 units and our SEQA consultant did prepare a memo basically indicating that this increase in units does not affect the validity or the, the, it doesn't affect the ISMD. So with all that said, staff recommends that the Planning Commission consider the following resolutions. Resolution number 23-038 recommending that the city council adopt an MND. Staff also further recommends that the Planning Commission consider Resolution number 23-039 recommended, recommending that the city council approve BTSM 9597. And staff further recommends that the Planning Commission consider Resolution number 23-040 recommending that the city council resolution number twenty-three dash oh four zero recommending that the city council approve D R twenty-two dash oh oh five. And that would conclude staff's presentation, if there's any questions for staff.
Thank you, Miguel. At this time, are there any clarifying questions from the commissioners? Commissioner Floyd?
Put this on. If you'll excuse me for a second, I have to type my password back in because. Never mind, I'll do it later. Let me put it back on the presentation. It's throwing me off. Oh, it's me. I was looking for diagrams. I'd like to hear more about the alternatives that we have as far as the possibility of constructing either another duet or a triplex. How would that look? Do we have a, do we have a description of how that would look? Or a map or something?
So the overall map would look something like this. If you were to, you know, recommend a duet, then the, the commission would, or the applicant would hopefully come back with a, a new concept that would go to city council with, along with your recommendation for the duet. So there, I believe you'd be able to make the recommendation as in like, for example, hey, you know, if you wanna do the duet and the applicant's amicable to it, you can say, hey, you know, lot number eighteen, that would be a perfect site for a duet. And the applicant would then return with that map to city council, not having to come back to the planning commission. And that map would go along with your recommendation. And a similar thing for a triplex.
So if we did the triplex, would it just be there were lots eleven and thirty-six are and?
That would more than likely be up to the applicant, where they would want to propose the triplex. I myself would be looking at lot six perhaps, you know, since it's a larger lot. That's a great place for a, a triplex. And then I'll remove the boundary of lot eleven and lot thirty-six and bring it back to thirty-six lots or thirty-five lots.
I see, or lot six could be expanded a little bit and you could put two duplexes there, kind of looks like. If you made the property lines along between six, seven, eight, and nine kind of match up with the lines there at seventeen, eighteen, seventeen, sixteen, fifteen, and fourteen, sorry, these numbers are really small. All right, so there's options.
Yeah, there, there are certainly options. And the applicant, if amicable to it, they, they could, they would certainly come back with something. And like I said, along with your recommendation, that's what we would take before city council and no need to come back for, to the planning commission.
All right. As far as the stormwater treatment, the permeable streets and, or pervious, pervious. So I had, never before I read this, did I know that impervious had a positive. Pervious driveways, pervious streets. Is this something that we've done before in Brentwood?
Good evening, planning commission, Alan Pacular, Director of Engineering. That's a good point, Commissioner Flor. And good, great question. With regards to pervious asphalt and materials, we do have that in Brentwood, but they're typically outside of the vehicle travel area. And we would find those in planter strips, for example. But as far as having the pervious materials as part of the streets, that is correct. That would be new to Brentwood. But there are other areas within the Bay Area that have pervious streets and pervious driveways like it's proposed here.
And since we don't use them, is, is there a reason? Are they considered inferior or something? Is, is there some problem with having pervious? Or is this just, just a different idea?
The pervious concept, it's been around for a while. It has its advantages and disadvantages. I would say the advantage is, is from a stormwater perspective. It allows the water to, to go through and infiltrate directly into the underlying soil. Whereas if it was pervious or standard concrete or asphalt, the runoff travels across the front, on, on top of the asphalt, which is quite dirty. And all that water needs to, you know, according, according to current regulations, we would have to treat them in the bioretention areas, which you've seen in other developments. So that is kind of the trade-off with regards to stormwater treatment. The, with regards to maintenance and structural integrity, I wanna say with my knowledge of, of this construction in elder parts of the Bay Area, it's done well and holding up, depending on the material. There is actually special certifications required to install the pervious asphalt. So as this project moves forward with pervious concrete and asphalt, we'd wanna make sure that it's done that in that manner. The reason why you don't see that in, in normal or typical city public streets is because in many of our streets, we do have significant traffic loading with trucks and garbage trucks and whatnot. So we're, I guess, it's still to be seened as to the overall life of those kind of roadways when they're pervious. So until we get more data, the city is always open to considering pervious materials in the future. But that's, at this time, where the, the jury's kind of out at this point.
Hence the HOA probably. And then the, the retention in the side yards. So I have, I guess, a French drain at my house. I have a couple of them that runs down either side. But they, you know, they, they're pipes, and then they have holes in the top, and they collect the water, and it just runs down to the street. So is, is this something similar to that, but it doesn't run to the street? Where does the water go?
These are different. What I'm seeing is our self-retaining areas. So these are sort of depressed areas within each property, which the intent is to take runoff, in this case, from the rooftops of homes and keep the, the runoff on the property themselves. Again, to promote infiltration of the water into the, into the ground. It is a preferred site design measure accepted throughout the Bay Area. It is in our clean water program as one of the options for developments to use. So it's, it's nice to see that here with higher rain levels when it, if you have a stronger rain event, for instance, there is gonna be piping to take that runoff into the storm system directly. But the immediate, immediate intent for what we call the first flush or light rains at first, when it's most dirtiest, is to allow that water to kind of just self-clean and get into the soil directly. Hope that explains it.
So is it like a depression there? A person out in that long would actually see a depression?
Yeah, it would be typically depressed, and I imagine it would be landscaped as well. And we would make sure that via the HOA or other private agreements that it's gonna be maintained in its perpetuity. So, hope that helps.
It does, thanks, thank you. I, I think that's my staff questions for now.
Can I jump on one thing on that question? So you said it needs to be maintained. Is that gonna be maintained by the individual property owner or by the HOA?
Are, because the city actually has to, has a responsibility to do ongoing inspections to make sure that these self-retaining areas are kept in its perpetuity. It would be on the HOA. And so we would make sure with the, when the C C N Rs are drafted and shared with the city for review, that would make sure that the C C N Rs explicitly state, state that, that the HOA will be responsible for maintaining that. That helps the city in a way that there's only one entity that the city would work directly with if there, if, when we, when we do inspections of these areas. If there's areas that needs maintenance or are maybe self-retaining areas just not quite working, we can contact the HOA directly versus individual property owners. And it'll be spelled out in their C C N Rs as to that process.
Sorry, one more point of clarification. So does, do each individual property owner still own that portion of property that that sits on? Or is it like a buffer between property lines? This is owned by the HOA or controlled by the HOA and outside? How's, how's that work?
It would be on the individual property owner's property. So it would not be an HOA property in this case, from what I've seen on their tentative map. Again, it would be covered in our C C N Rs with spelling out as to the HOA's responsibility to go there and maintain those areas. In addition, there's another mechanism we can use as the city as when we do the final map review to make sure there's proper easements for access as well. And there's one more part, Commissioner Ziegler, that I'd like to mention is the city actually enters into an operation and maintenance agreement with the HOA as the project gets towards completion. And in that O and M agreement, it, it further states the requirements for the HOA to maintain those areas.
Okay, go ahead, Commissioner Spaulding.
Just following up on, on this, since this has been installed in other parts of the Bay Area, has there been any issues with this design with the foundations of the homes?
Great question. I would, not that I'm aware of. Typically, we, there is a geotechnical review with this as well. And they would chime in as to making sure there is a proper, that these self-retaining areas are set properly away from the building to avoid those kind of issues. I have not heard of any issues with regards to that happening elsewhere in the Bay Area or in Brentwood as well.
Commissioner Spaulding, Commissioner Brand.
No questions, thank you.
So just piggybacking on the other two questions. Where exactly, if you could, if you could share, get it on the record, are these grounds located in East County? And the only reason I'm asking is I'd like to do a little research of my own.
Sure. For clarification, Chair Roberts, are you asking about pervious concrete?
Yes, pervious concrete, yes.
I am aware of several private developments in the city of San Jose that, that utilize private pervious concrete.
Residential?
Residential, yes. So similar subdivisions, private street, pervious concrete. There's also areas or other developments that implore other pervious materials or ideas, which is, I don't wanna get into, but we call them silver cells, where there's actually a treatment soil below the ground. So you have vehicle traffic above and then actual treatment measures below underground. That's not what's being proposed here, but that's, that's out there. Another example of a pervious, I would say, asphalt being applied in a public facility, facility is I'm aware of in Hayward. Alameda County has a, a, an office there that has a parking lot that was recently redone from, from impervious to pervious asphalt. I'd be happy to share some of these informations with you.
I will certainly check that out, thank you. For the presenter, the five bedrooms, let me go back to that for a second. Reading the packet, I didn't see any verbiage on this being connected to a university, a dormitory, or transitional housing. Are these traditional housing units? This, this setup, this dormitory communal thing?
So it's, once more, it's allowed through a state density bonus law. It's something that was enacted or implemented January of twenty-twenty-three. And the density bonus law itself doesn't say that it's specific to transition housing or as a dormitory, anything like that. It simply says that these units are allowed in a shared housing building. They're called shared housing units. And if they meet the requirements of the bedroom and the bathroom and kitchenette, then they would be allowed.
Okay.
So it, it doesn't have anything to do with college dorms.
Or nothing like that, no motel?
No, they just have to be for non-transient use, which means that more than thirty days. So realistically, anybody could come in and rent one of these units and live in it like they would any other rental residence.
Okay, all right, okay.
Madam Chair. Oh, sorry, go ahead.
Commissioner, Commissioner Spaulding?
Yeah, just a, a couple of questions on a few different topics. Can you explain what dedication means? There may be people who are, because this is a little bit unique. I've been on the commission for, this is going on my fourth year, and there's not been one, you know, that's come before us in that time period. So there may be some people who don't know what that means.
Certainly, thank you, Commissioner. So for the affordable housing ordinance, one of the provisions and, or allow, allowances is that the applicant does have the option to offer for dedication to the city, a unit, and it would count for two. And dedication in this, in this sense means that the city, if they were to accept it, they would accept ownership, the city would own that, that residence or that unit. And the city would use, use it to, for affordable housing. That's essentially what, what it means by dedication.
Thank you. So according to the traffic data that would be generated by this development, because I, I did read the E I Rs. I had a question regarding the, the math. I didn't get the math. And you, and I don't, there's no consultant on that that did it. So I'm not sure if you're gonna be able to answer this question, but I'll ask it anyways. So it says four hundred and forty-nine daily trips, thirty-eight peak AM, thirty-nine peak PM. One, so someone left in the morning and didn't come back? Or, you know, it, they don't line up. So, and then additionally, it says it's fifteen percent below Brentwood city average. How? How can you, how is that calculated?
April, can you see if the consultant's available? And the, the consultant should be available on Zoom to answer that.
Yeah, okay, while we, oh, he's already there, okay.
Hi, everybody. Good evening, my name is Josh Smith with De novo Planning Group. So I have on my end here, the V M T study that was put together. So I think I can answer your question here. So with regards to the fifteen percent below figure, so that relates to V M T, vehicle miles traveled. And so what the, what the traffic analyst did basically was, what they do is they look at the city average V M T. And for secret purposes, the V M T for the project needs to be, in this case, it's a V M T per capita metric. And so the idea being, it needs to be fifteen percent below that average citywide V M T level. And as long as they can do that, from a secret perspective, they can show that they're below that particular threshold for traffic. And so in this case, they did, they did demonstrate that.
How? How can you demonstrate that it's going to be fifteen percent below the city average when the development doesn't exist yet?
Well, they, they use it based on the models they have. And, and so in this case, it was T J K M that put this together. And so what they do, it's basically based on the part of the city. I mean, that's ultimately what it comes down to, is, is what part of the city this is located in. In some ways, you could kind of make the case, well, it, it sounds kind of arbitrary. It's just sort of where in the city that is. But that ends up determining how they, you know, how their model, you know, figures out. It basically is an estimate, of course, for the V M T per capita.
But, yeah. So how does that take into account other developments that are going to be going into this area or new schools that are going into this area? Because my, my concern always with traffic, and I, I, I will say that I don't believe the math, right? I think it is a wild guess at best. I don't think there's any, I'm in science, and I don't believe there's a lot of science in this calculations. I know it's a calculation, and I know it's done to the best of the ability that can be done. But my concern is, I don't live in a vacuum, right? So every new development, we have to look at individually, but there's a cumulative impact in an area. And this has other, there are other things coming in this area. So that's why I asked, how can you calculate something that's fifteen percent below the average when you're? When you're calculating it in a, in a, in my opinion, how I understand it, in a vacuum, when there's, there's external factors that are going to come into play before this development is built? And then yet you're asking us to say, trust me, it's going to be, the impact is going to be less than what CEQA says. So I just, I've never been able to understand the walk when it comes to any, you know, pretty much every traffic study that we look at. And so I'm just, I'm, maybe if you explain it again to me, I will get it. Because it is, it is a, it is a concern of residents. You know, it used to take me 10 minutes to get from where I lived to City Hall, now it takes me 20, right? But somehow it's, the impact of all the new development is less than city average, right? So I, I live in the real world, I know these are calculations. So how can you convince me that this is actually going to be lesser than the city average, when my real life experience tells me that's not the case?
So basically, the fact, as I understand it, the factors that are involved here are, you know, you have your, the particular land use, of course. So we have these, these residences, so that's input into the, into the model. And that, that's a primary input that determines what kind of VMT this is going to be, based on the number of trips. Again, all tied to this, this region wide model that the traffic consultant utilized. And then I hear what you're saying, so to your point, you know, how, I, I agree with you in the sense that we can't really know the exact VMT for the project once it's built out, because there are so many of these variables. But from a, you know, beyond that land use input, which is, which gives us a lot of information. As I mentioned, there's this locational input, so where in the city it's located. And that's based on, again, this model that's built on, on all this existing data that's been taken over the years for the region. And so, you know, that's why I mentioned it, it can vary a lot between these parts of the city, because they basically, again, it's, it's not as micro focused as, as, you know, we would like. I, I agree in a, in a, an ideal sense. So I hear what you're saying there, but from a purely CEQA standpoint, this is definitely covered. And then also, you know, again, just from the perspective of trying to take into account what variables we can, it, it does, it does the job of doing that.
Okay, so my, my other question is on the, is on school, the school calculations, which I know, I'm sure, you know, it's mitigated to less than significant. And, and again, I'm kind of picking on you, but it's really, it's, it's not, yeah, I know you're just, you're doing some math. But, you know, the schools, according to your own report on page 81, are over capacity, and that's based on 2016 numbers, not 2020, almost 2024 numbers. So I know that they're going, the, the applicant, if this is approved, is going to pay an impact fee. But how? How does that impact fee reduce the overcrowding that is happening both in the high school level as well as the younger grades, because they're both, high school is way over. The younger grades are over by 160, but again, that was, that's old data. So, and I, and I look myself, there doesn't seem to be any new data for you to look at, to see the impact. But how does their payment help reduce the impact to overcrowding? Because we're building new homes, right? This would be new homes, and I realize in it of itself, this development is only going to add X number of students. But on top of, in as estates, which is a similar applicant, if not the same applicant, maybe a different LLC. There are other projects, right, that, that haven't been built yet, they're going to be, that are going to add to the overcrowding in the schools. And I moved here, along with a number of people that I know, moved here primarily for the schools, right? So how does their impact fees reduce and offset? How can a, a fee reduce it from significant impact, which you state, to a less than significant impact? May not be a fair question for you, because you're not in the, in the schools, but you're who I get to ask the question to.
No worries. I'll, I'll just say, the first thing I'll mention is, purely from the CEQA standpoint, we're covered. Because, you know, as, as you guys probably saw, we have this mitigation measure, PUB-1. So that's relating to the payment of fees. And so, let's see, your mitigation fees for, for the school. So, yeah, if you're, just, just to say upfront, from, from a CEQA standpoint, it covers it. That being said, I, I see what you're saying. Again, it's one of the cases, I think, where, you know, there's no perfect data. And like you said, a couple of the sources we have are the, are the latest versions, but they're, you know, one of them is, like you mentioned, from 2016. But that relates specifically to this student generation rate, which typically, again, is based on the number of residences in this case. So it shouldn't change too much over time, even though, you know, one of these studies was, was from seven years ago. So, you know, we use those student generation rates from those latest reports to estimate. Of course, it's going to be just an estimate, like, like you mentioned, but it estimates the, the student generation. But I, I hear your concerns, it doesn't necessarily solve the problem, just because there are these fees that are going to have to be paid. It takes time for these schools to be developed. But the idea being that those fees would end up paying for, well, whether it's new schools or just adding capacity to existing schools. That's the idea, is that the fees are sufficient. And legally and from a CEQA standpoint, that, that's the case.
Yeah, okay. Josh, thanks for those questions. I have a few other questions for staff that I don't think are for you, unless there's follow up questions on those two for Josh.
Oh, you had something?
The, the other question, and Katie, I'm not sure if this is going to come to you or to Miguel, and that is the 3.2 people per unit calculation for park size was a topic of conversation at a recent city council meeting. So can we just get clarification on how we're, how that number, 3.2, is being used, or where it's coming from, I guess is a better way of saying it?
Sure, and we are lucky to have Aaron Wanda with us this evening from the Park and Rec Department, so I'll cede the floor to him.
Thank you, and good evening, Commissioners. Yes, the 3.2 is a number that's been in place, at least the 15 years that I've been here. We've based all of our development fee programs dating back that long and then some on the 3.2, which comes right out of the general plan. So unless the general plan gets changed and a new number becomes adopted, the 3.2 is what we have traditionally used and, and will use until that is changed.
Thank you. That's all I have for now. Sorry, going back to the duets, changing gears a little bit. Stipulated the two street parking spaces per single family home. Are there specific requirements for both duet, oh, I guess the Lot 36 duet, as a result of having five independent, I forget what you, housing units, let's call it, presumably with as many as two people per, per unit?
So the density bonus law doesn't require additional parking outside of what is required through zoning. And in this case, it would be two, two stalls per, around two stalls for the overall shared housing building.
Great. And okay, that's it, thank you.
Okay, thank you. At this time, I'm going to open it up to a public hearing. I'd ask the applicant if they'd like to come forward, we've got 10 minutes, thank you.
Good evening, Chairwoman Roberts and members of the Planning Commission, Jackie Sino. And I'm here on behalf of CCON to present the project. Appreciate the staff report that Miguel has put together and, and really put together a very thorough staff report. And I don't want to be redundant, but just kind of want to go over a couple of the highlights of the project. And then maybe I can offer a couple of clarifications on some of the questions that came up this evening. So in the effort not to be too redundant and get into too many details, because I know everybody went through the staff report. Acquired the project in about 2021 and submitted the first submittal for tentative map in April of 2022. So I've been working with Miguel and with staff to get everything to where it is today. This project is in compliance with general plan and also with the zoning. We wanted to keep the large lots, so all of the lots are 12,000 square foot lot minimums. They go up to over a half an acre. I think about almost 23,000 square feet. All of the floor plans for distinct elevations, I think we go from 2,900 to almost 4,000 square feet. A couple of highlights, again, wanting to keep the larger lots. We did apply and we did submit the density bonus application, but really the intention with that was not to try to maximize the number of units that we can get on site. That number could go up to about 74 units if we wanted to maximize. But instead, we submitted that density bonus application, so we can get some latitude and flexibility on development standards. We're not going to apply that on every lot, but just want to be able to have that flexibility if we chose to do so. All of the floor plans that we have are three, four, and five bedrooms, two and three car garages, three to three and a half bath. And so going into the density bonus, the intention, like I said, with that is not to crowd the site with the maximum unit count, but just to get a little bit of flexibility and latitude on some of the development standards, so that we have flexibility in that, if we need to be able to exercise that. I put together a slide that I've, I'm not sure, maybe April, did you have a slide that you might be able to put up? Just to go over the affordable housing components of the site? Yes, okay. If you could just blow that up, would you be able to zoom in on just the table a little bit more? Okay, that's good, all right. So as Miguel had already alluded to, we have to provide affordable housing and be in compliance with, of course, the city of Brentwood. But also, because we submitted for state density bonus application, we also have to comply with the state density bonus requirements for affordable housing. The highlighted areas are the units that do apply and are applicable for meeting the city requirements for affordable housing. So the duet, I'm calling it a duet unit, I'll call for the sake of the conversation, duet A is that unit that is going to be dedicated, or we're submitting that for dedication to the city, which will meet the income level of the very low category. As you'll see, a little footnote at the bottom of this chart, per the Brentwood municipal code, each unit that is dedicated to the city equates to the construction of two affordable units. So for the city, that counts as two affordable units. Going down to the next highlighted area, duet B, or I'll call it duet B on the opposite side. That will be retained by the applicant for either we're going to sell that, or we may retain it for a rental unit. That will count for the lower income level category, that will count for one unit. So that brings us up to three. Then at the very bottom of the chart, one single family detached unit will be retained, again, for sale or rent, and that will be in the moderate income category. So there are four total affordable units that will meet that requirement for the city. Now, because we have our state density bonus application, you'll see on that second column, if we go up to the highlighted area, duet house A, to be dedicated to the city, we have that shared housing unit. That is five bedrooms that include what we call a kitchenette. Usually that is a sink, it has a microwave, also bathroom facility in a little over about 100 square feet. So sometimes, you know, Chairperson Robert, you were asking if this is for a dormitory, if it's connected to that. It really is just a large house that has five bedrooms that also are inclusive of these kitchenette and these bathroom facilities. Those can be rented out, and though they do not apply to the city affordable housing requirements, they are counted for the state density bonus application requirements. And so then, at the very below, the second duet that I've highlighted, we're also, even though not acquired, required per state density bonus or through the city affordable housing ordinance, we're not required to do this, but the JADU is just a junior accessory dwelling unit. Basically, that's a bedroom as well as a bathroom that have access from an exterior door that can be rented. And we are going to provide four of those. Though they don't count toward the city or toward state density bonus, they do count toward the city's arena or regional housing allocation requirements. And so we are providing a total of 11 affordable units. It is noteworthy just to mention that because we are providing the 11 units, we exceed 20% of the units that we have on site will be affordable. So I guess in summary, you know, we want to be able to keep the large lot feel. We want to have an amalgam of different housing types. We want to do our part in being able to provide the affordable housing types, and we're trying to do that through this diversity of product. And then just lastly, I did hear a couple of questions coming up about the C3 areas, the self retaining areas. Just want to point out that the self retaining areas, these depressed areas, they're really only three inches and in depth. So they're not deep, 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 they're not going to be eye sores, easily landscaped. It's just that, I mean, I, I'm, I'm sure that you're already aware of this, but just with the landscaping plan, we're going to propose landscaping that is going to be acceptable for those areas. Also, the pervious paving or pervious asphalt. Both the self retaining areas, then the pervious asphalt, and we're also proposing these decorative pavers for the driveways. All of those are outlined in the green infrastructure plan per the city. They're also acceptable, you know, through the C3 guidelines that are applicable to all contra costed developments. I have built a few subdivisions and Concord is one about 10 years ago with pervious asphalt. No issues with it, right in the subdivision, they get a lot of traffic. But I mean, these products are engineered so well that, that problems are minimized to a minimum. So we're here to answer any questions. I should have mentioned this at the beginning when I came up, but I have project engineer here, Doug Chen, to answer any technical questions. Also on the line, we have the corporate counsel for the project, her name is Chelsea McLean, with Holland and Knight, can answer any technical questions if necessary. And we appreciate, again, the opportunity to present.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay. It's time, do we have any questions for? Okay. I see some heads nodding.
Good evening, thank you.
Good evening.
Public comment first?
So, yes. Can you walk me through how you came to this layout? What I mean is, a, a couple of factors. Obviously, they, the type of materials you're using in the roads, eliminating bio retention, obviously, that gets you some more lots, understand. Park, I will say, I'm not a big fan of the park up against a main thoroughfare of Blue and Tree Road. I think you've seen, and I think it's been conditioned for a bigger park, which we know that is a major issue in this city, or, or, let me say, not issue, concern, especially as of late. And I guess I would straight up ask you, are you opposed to alternate options that would eliminate the five unit structure? Whether that's a triplex or looking at another lot to put a, another duet to get to the affordable housing numbers that are required?
Okay.
There's a lot there, so, sorry.
No, that's okay, that's okay, you're going to test my memory tonight, I think, I was listening. So with, I guess, going to the affordable unit and your question about will I entertain other options? Yes, I'm open, I'm open. I would prefer not to go down the path of a triplex. It's a different type of build, it's a different type of product. I, I will say, though, that that duet is designed with five bedrooms. And so that would still be, it's still a five bedroom home. And then we have a lot of different, well, not a lot, but I have the different floor plans. Some of them can go up to five bedrooms as well. And no, not all of those more traditional product don't have the kitchenette, they don't have a bathroom. I mean, of course, not every unit has that and every floor plan has that, but I'm, I'm open to the discussion, I am open to the discussion. You asked me about walking you through how we got to this. So when we first submitted in April of 2022, it was a 38 lot subdivision. We went through all the channels as normal, submitting the maps, working with staff, and then it goes through its review with all the departments. It was Parks and Rec that did come back with a comment about wanting a park. And so we went back and forth, discussed that, and so we did designate that parcel, it's parcel Z on the map, as park. And then that necessitated a loss of a few units. Again, that's part of our density bonus application, so that we could kind of regroup and get a little bit of relief on some of the development standards. on some of the development standards. One of the things, just doing a little bit of research as we dove into this a little bit more with the park, I wonder if I should. April, can you pull up, it's a little bit midway through the deck of slides? If you can just try to find, it's this existing parks exhibit? Let's see if it can come up. Little bit further. Okay, there you go. I know it's a little bit faint, but this is an existing parks exhibit, and that red circle just shows the radius within about, is that a half a mile? Did we do it? Yeah, it's within a quarter mile. So that red circle shows a quarter of a mile, and within that red circle are four parks. We have Steeplechase Park, Arbor View Park, Pistachio Park, and Portofino Park. So there are a number of parks within walking distance and a quarter mile distance, which is really in part of the code, in your city code. The intention is that there will be parks within that distance, so there'll be ample parks. And then further, you know, less than 50 units is not required to build a park on site, but could pay in lieu fees. And those fees, going back to what are those fees used for, they'd be used for the city to be able to build a park in an area that maybe is underserved or under resourced with parks. So yes, I am open to that discussion. I hope that wasn't too wordy, but.
Thank you.
Big picture.
Commissioner Brandt?
Yeah, sure. Couple of questions. So when this was first released to the public back in May, there were some clear changes, it looked a little bit different on the map as far as the tentative map. Was the public then provided a revised tentative map after they had attended the meeting in May?
What changes?
Well, particularly the duet was not there in May.
Yes, and actually, we did just have a community meeting, and the community is here, a lot of the attendees, if not all the attendees. We went over that the map hadn't changed itself, but there was a duet product, we went over that product. And so each of the neighbors that were noticed for that meeting, which about seven or eight attended, they're aware of that, yes, that's correct.
Great. So we're counting, as far as my math that goes, on the duet in question, like number 36, we count that as a JADU, is that, is my identification correct there?
Well.
No?
May I just clarify, or do you want to clarify? Or, yeah. So just going back, and maybe April, if you don't mind, can you just put that slide back up? So for the city purposes, for the city requirements for affordable housing, this, your city does not, they do not recognize the JAD, or did you say JADUs?
Yeah, yeah.
Yes, the JADUs do not meet the affordable housing requirement for state density bonus or for the city. What that does is that counts, it's almost like a bonus, we're throwing it in. So these JADUs count towards your city requirement to meet the numbers of the regional housing allocation needs.
Understood. However, we are counting them towards the park allotment.
If I may jump in, I think there's a little bit of confusion. So the five units that are being proposed in the shared housing building, they're known as shared housing units, which differ from JADUs. These are special shared housing units that are allowed through the provisions of the density bonus law. The JADUs, they're allowed through a separate law that has nothing to do with density bonus. That's why the JADUs don't count towards density bonus or affordable housing.
Oh, I understand, but if, we're talking 40 units total, right?
Yes.
Yes, okay, so our park calculation here is 3.2 times 40, 0.64. No, I'm not, I'll catch up with my logic here in a minute. So we have, it looks like, so plans two and three have the option of an ADU.
That's right.
Now, are we considering those as being separate units as towards counting towards park allotment?
No, no, the JADUs would count towards our arena, but.
No, no, sorry, ADUs. They have the option of having an ADU on plans two and three.
They would not count towards our park, correct, Katie? I mean, realistically speaking, any, any single family resident can propose and have an ADU and a JADU, and it doesn't count towards any of those impact fees or any, anything like that. Am I correct, Katie?
So I believe that is correct, that the addition of an ADU would not result in an additional population count for purposes of parkland dedication requirements? We can find the statute and cite that for you, but I don't have it at my fingertips. I believe that is correct.
Okay, so a bit more loosely on the, it's a bit more strict as far as the definition of a true unit when it comes to that count. Am I understanding that right?
So the way the state has been treating ADUs and JADUs is that they don't appreciably increase the population of a given lot. And so for that reason, many of the state policies regarding how ADUs and JADUs are, how measures such as impact fees and dedication requirements are imposed against them reflect this philosophy that the JADUs and ADUs won't be adding appreciably more people than a single family home.
Okay, thank you, understood. That's all for now.
Okay.
Commissioner Spaulding?
Katie, that's interesting, the way the state calculates it, and it's not surprising that I disagree with the state on counting anything. But the, because an apartment that would be built would be the same thing as an ADU. So, anyway, that's not my question for you.
Okay.
So my question for you is, you, it sounds like you've used a technology for pervious before, and by doing so, you don't have to take up land to build a bio retention area, correct?
Yes, with the impervious alone, it will not meet the calculations. So those calculations are all done by the engineer, and so usually it's a combination, a combination of these practices that have to be used collaboratively in order to be able to, to meet the runoff calculations and make that work.
So why, I guess that partly answers the question, but you, but there was a smaller development not too long ago that was in S.A., right? Where the technology was not used, and it was a smaller one. So I guess I'm trying to understand the technology, since you have experience building it, why would you, I understand that there's a math behind it, but why wouldn't you, you, why wouldn't a developer use it more often?
Yeah, are you talking about my project that was before you?
Yes.
Okay, one of the reasons is that project isn't large enough to make it work. And so that's where, this is a larger project, 16.3 acres, I think my INES project is four acres. So I don't have enough area to utilize all these different mechanisms. I have these large front yards, one lot I think is over a half an acre, so I have a lot of area where the front yard can be utilized for these depressed areas that are not full blown detention areas, but they're self retaining areas, and so it works. That area that is basically just an access and a cul-de-sac, it would not be able to meet the requirements for that. So this is large enough that I can kind of utilize a couple different of these mechanisms.
Is there a size for, of a development that's too large?
I don't think so, I don't think so.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right. Park location and duet location. Thoughts on being flexible with the location of both? Within the lot, not changing the number of units, just moving them around?
With the duet, the size of it, the size of the duet, it's a larger unit because obviously it's a shared housing unit, so it cannot fit on just every lot. It has to fit on a larger lot. That design was designed by an architect where we gave input based on past feedback from planning commission meetings as well as city council meetings, where the orientation to look like two separate homes, even though it is, of course, a duet unit, but to be able to design the architecture in such a way that it would meet some of the subjective, of course, and the objective standards, it requires a larger lot, so it really cannot be fit. It cannot fit on every lot, so I do have limitations on that. And to the second question, I would like, and I was mentioning a little bit earlier, you know, this project is not required to build a park because it is not greater than the 50 lots. We did it to accommodate a request from staff. However, I would like the commission and of course the city council to consider that I be able to remove the park, pay the in lieu fees, and then the city could build a park in an area that is underserved by parks because we do have four parks within a quarter of a mile, I think there's six and a half a mile. And so there are ample number of outdoor park and recreation areas. So I think that would be my straightforward answer, hopefully that answers your question.
Well, it answers a different question. So if we would, if the commission recommends the city council that you are not, that you have to have a park in there, are you flexible to moving the park to a different part? Commissioner Ziegler made a comment about the location of the park being next to a major roadway in relocating the park to a different part of the development.
We'd have to look at that a little further. I need to make sure I can see this from an engineering state standpoint, and that really, that it's feasible, that we could make that work, it's a possibility.
Chair, if I may add, the park manager over, the location on this park, if it is to stay, I'm guessing pretty much has to stay in that location, and I say that because these are private streets that go into the roadway. This would be a public park. In order for the developer to get park dedication, it needs to be a public park. So what, if you move that park into that development, now you're encouraging walking, driving onto private roadways, and you're encroaching that HOA within that development. In addition, from a safety and security standpoint, PD prefers these parks at the front of our developments where they're highly, in high visibility areas, being viewed by the residents in there, and then again, access for their patrol vehicles along the roadway. So two, the most important part, though, is we'd be putting a public park inside a private entity, and that's, that's going to create problems.
Is it, I mean, sorry, just to follow up, Rose Garden is directly adjacent on the other side of O'Hara. Now, that's under an HOA, ungated, and there is a number of parks within the center of that subdivision. I don't, I don't follow the logic.
Completely understood and constructed many years ago.
Well, I would ask then if it's a, and that's a good point, I didn't think about the private-public aspect of it when I, when I asked the question, but I would challenge that because it's a public park. Once you get on that road, when I take a right, if what you're saying is true, that's, now it's, now it's a private park. So that doesn't, to me, that doesn't sink. Obviously, I'm looking at Katie because I'm assuming she's going to jump in at some point, but it's a legal standpoint, but it feels to me like both things can't be true. It can't be a private road and we have a public park in there.
Exactly.
I'm just bringing up facts, I'm not stating what has to be or does not have to be. I'm just stating, if the public park is placed within a private entity as Rose Garden, now you're inviting public into a private neighborhood.
But an HOA in itself does not make something private because Shadow Lakes has an HOA, and that's not.
Sorry, I was referring to the roadways are private, so now you're getting extra usage on privately funded maintained roadways?
You're still looking at me. So I would just say that I will defer to Mr. Wandon in the Park and Rec practices, but yes, as a factual matter, what we are hearing is that in order to access this public park, the public would be using private roadways. If it is in case, the fact that, or is in fact the case that the public, good lord, the Park and Rec Department maintains a policy of requiring public access to our public parks, then, then I understand Mr. Wandon's point. We don't have anyone here from the PD tonight to talk to public access, but I know Mr. Wandon works closely with them in these matters.
That's all I have, all the questions I have.
Commissioner Floyd?
Sure. About these wing lots, they're pretty bizarre, and I was just wondering if you're, I see that you submitted an alternate that does away with them, I assume you'd be probably prefer not to have them.
Yes, I would prefer not to have them, and if you grant the waivers that I'm requesting through the density bonus, we can do away with those. And then that alternative lotting plan, everything stays the same, except the wings. I like wings better than tails, Miguel. So we can do away with those, yes.
And going back, you don't really like the idea of a triplex much, I understand, so. Just want to let you know, I heard that. But as far as the duplex, if there was a second duplex added, would it have to also be that same floor plan? I mean, even the one that's there, how would it be a big lift for you to modify it so it wasn't full of dormitories, but rather was just more of a residential? Maybe even just mirror the floor plan that's in the other one or something like that?
Yes, I believe we can do that. One of the units, we would want to keep the five shared housing units, the five bedrooms with the kitchenette and the bathrooms, because that meets the state density bonus requirements. But we could work with modifications on the other, on the other units. We can look into that.
Thank you.
Okay.
Those are my questions.
So I'm really concerned about this five bedroom kitchenette setup that you have here for the low income. It's, it seems very communal. I'm trying to think through this because initially, when you submitted these plans, that was not your plan. So something changed, and now we've got a unit with five bedrooms, kitchenettes, and a shared living room and big kitchen. And I'm trying to think how that sounds to the city of Brentwood, because this would be the first where we would see folks that don't know one another in separate rooms, like a motel, because that's the vision I have, or dormitory. And it's somehow safe for this, this, this project. I don't see how that fits in with the city of Brentwood. And I am concerned that because low, we have low income, low income automatically means communal. I'm trying to figure out if there's any way, and I know that there are two options that are on the table for that five bedroom, and something that the commission can entertain, but I'm looking at your map here, and I'm, I'm very concerned that something like this, which we have not seen in the city of Brentwood, would now take a set of precedent for the city of Brentwood to now have a unit with five different rooms, five separate families, two garages, or two parking areas, and a communal area where folks would share or figure out a schedule, if you will, on when they can be in a living room or kitchen. I don't know how that fits in with your overall, other than the density bonus, of course, how that fits in with the overall vision here. If the city, and they've put two options on the table, I think those options are in, in regards to this five bedroom factor. If I'm wrong, correct me, Katie. If, if I'm wrong, correct me, Katie.
I'll defer that question to Miguel, actually, our planner.
The two options that are on the table are directed toward this five-bedroom setup?
They're directed in the case that the city council does not accept the, the unit as a dedication. If the city council doesn't accept it, then the applicant would have to come up with an alternative to meet the density bonus requirements. These are some of the alternatives that we've come up with, these, this duet and this triplex concept. I believe that the duet concept would satisfy state density bonus law and/or affordable housing, provided that you keep that, no, I believe it would meet the requirements, right?
Oh, I, I don't doubt that it would meet the requirements. I'm suggesting that this is the first of its kind in the city of Brentwood to have a unit that is, got five bedrooms in one house with five bathrooms and a communal area because it's low income.
So to clarify, the duet concept would satisfy the city's affordable requirements and the density bonus law to grant waivers without necessitating the five-shared housing concept.
Okay, good, very good. So that is, that's something that, yeah, I'm, I'm, I've read this back and forth. I had a little meeting with the city and what changed? What changed?
Yeah, just something just to consider. I understand your concerns. I do. I understand your concerns. But I think the intention behind the shared housing unit, just the concept, is to provide solutions to people that are transitioning from a place of either being unhoused or going through a situation where they have not been able to be in a home life that is healthy. And so the intention behind this is not to have people that are wandering in and out. It is to be able to provide really a whole amalgam. I think that's what the affordable housing ordinance is throughout the state and probably throughout the nation, really are just to be able to provide all types of options for people at all different stages and places. And so the intention really is to be able to provide a transitional housing solution in the interim until somebody can get back on their feet. And some people, they can move right into a home and they're self-sufficient. They can take care of all the utilities and be able to be, you know, self-motivated and self-initiated. Other people, I think the shared housing intention is that you're going to provide people structure and support within a community element. Now, the other element is that if there was, were to be dedicated, because one of the units is to be dedicated to the city of Brentwood, then all the cities that these dedications takes place and transpire, that they have these oversight mechanisms to ensure that there's a proper vetting process. You're getting responsible people that truly are in need of this and want to be able to utilize it in its best way possible. And so they're going to maximize and be motivated to take care of the property. There's going to be enforcement, so to speak. So that's the intention behind it. I understand what you're saying because that would probably be messy if there were no mechanisms for oversight or for some monitoring and to make sure that it's utilized to its proper use. But that is really not the intention here.
Okay.
If that makes sense.
That makes sense. So there will be someone that would be overseeing this facility then?
That's if, this, this unit is for dedication to the city and then the city, whatever the purview of the city. And of course, different cities have their different structures and mechanisms of regulating and monitoring, et cetera.
And that is if the city decides to take it.
That is correct.
Yeah, okay. And that's, that's, I can't speak for the city. But if the city chooses not to, then, then what say you if the city decides not to?
Well, on that, and maybe I could have our council chime in. I'm not sure if that's appropriate or if it, I guess two things. One is my understanding, Katie or Chelsea, please chime in, or Miguel. But this is being offered for dedication. There is a process. I'm, I'm loosely familiar with the process. The process is offering a unit for dedication. This is a draft affordable housing plan that you have before. It's a draft plan. As we go forward in the entitlement process, you will see a draft affordable agreement, which will stipulate and articulate the specifics of what that dedication looks like and what that means. At that time, there will be either an acceptance or not. I don't know if your code allows for the rejection, but we will have done our part in being able to dedicate the unit or offer it for dedication, fulfilling our obligation. That is my basic understanding.
Okay.
So I would add to that, there is a process that this goes through. But part of this process is the planning commission making a recommendation to the city council as to whether or not to approve the various entitlements that are being sought. Here, those entitlements are the map and the design review approval. In order for a map to be approved, the planning commission must make a determination that among other things, the map is in compliance with our zoning ordinance. Our zoning ordinance requires applicants to fulfill their affordable housing obligations. If the city council were not to accept the dedication of the unit that has the five shared housing units, then the applicant would not be able to make use of this sort of two-for-one crediting system. And they would be short one affordable unit for satisfaction of their affordable housing requirement. Thus, staff has prepared some options for consideration and discussion with the applicant as to other ways in which they might meet their requirements if the city council chooses not to accept that offer of dedication. We are not aware of any recent acceptances by the city of new housing inventory into our affordable housing stock. So to give you all as much information as we could, these options have been considered, have been added for your consideration and discussion with the applicant. Does that help?
Yeah, it helps. And, and those are just the two options that the city came up with. The commission can also come up with an option of its own and write that into the record as well, correct?
So you're certainly free to discuss other options with the applicant? We would have to make sure that the math worked out in terms of the provision of sufficient affordable housing to meet the requirements of both the local ordinance and the state density bonus law.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Stupoli?
How do I want to word this? Regarding the, the duet. Have you built one of these units in another city?
No, I have not built this.
So new, new concept for, for you. My concern, and, and this is maybe more for the city to, to answer or for us to discuss among ourselves. But my concern about when I saw this was not that it wasn't a creative idea, because it certainly is, and I get the intent. But we, you know, we have an inclusionary policy where the duet, the affordable housing is not even supposed to be next to each other. And there's, there's, there's a duet next to this, I think the one unit that sounds like people are concerned about, at least we're discussing. And so that's not, they're, they're supposed to be, you know, I, I don't know that we have clear standards in terms of how far apart, but they're not supposed to be next to each other. But my main concern is, and I know this is not your intent, so I don't want this to be heard that way or taken that way. Is it, the, the, the people who would be living this are be, or be, who would move into this property or being, when you're building inventory, or to me, my first reaction was they're being treated lesser than others in similar developments where affordable housing is being built. So instead of getting my own home, I'm getting a dorm room, 100 square feet. And I know it has a kitchenette and I know it has a bathroom and a closet. And I know you have maybe more space that I might end up with. But it doesn't, something doesn't feel right with the end product. The intent is there, but it, but that's where I'm struggling with this concept. Let alone it's next to another duet, which it, it is not with, it is not supposed to be right next to each other in terms of, you know, the, the affordable housing is supposed to be spread out through a development, not next, next to each other. So I'm not sure if there's an answer there, because I know it's not your intent. But it, but it, it just feels like it's, it's not the right solution yet.
Yes. No, I understand that. I, I understand. I'm listening to you and I'm taking it all in. I do have, I've got to go through some of the documents that I brought to be able to articulate my next point. Just, I'll come back to that. I'll come back to that.
And that's fine. I think we, we, if you need to gather your thoughts on that, I, I know we still need to get, I'd love to hear what the public has to say on, on this topic too. But one other, just clarification question on the, on the JADUs, right? Those would be part of a property that's sold to, at market rate to somebody, correct?
That is correct.
Okay, just wanted to clarify that. That's what I thought. Thank you.
No problem.
Okay. At this time, I'm going to open it up for pub, the public. I look to April. Are there any folks on Zoom?
Actually, I do have one card in person first, Ryan Tolchinsky.
Please come forward.
Hello. Merry Christmas.
To you as well.
Give me one second. I'll open my notes. So my wife and I are on the north side of the proposed project. We're Ryan and Megan Tolchinsky at 901 Bonnie Lane. And we own Alert Canine. It's a dog training center. So overall, I think from what we know of the project, we're, we're not opposed to the development. We understand change in growth and generally appreciate, I think, the look and the layout, especially with larger lots. So my goal, or our goals tonight is possibly to mitigate and prevent what we feel is any future problems with two to four of the bordering homes on the north side, which would be me and there's another neighbor Enrique Ramirez, who's not able to be here tonight, but I think their concerns might be the same. And, you know, the future remaining 32, 33, 34 houses that are proposed for the rest of the lot, or the rest of the development. So we run a dog training facility and we've had a pretty good record in the past, 25 years. We have minimal, if not any complaints to the city. Aren't in good standing with our community and current neighbors and would like to keep it that way. There is a safety concern with regards to the standard six-foot-high Good Neighbor fence. This is, we feel this is an unacceptable height as it would be easy for a child or a person or a spry dog to climb over and onto a field of dogs and have an unsavory, potentially unsavory incident. From my experience, the reliability of these fences is subpar, to say the least, and degrade quickly. As many dogs and our kids could come through broken or loose boards. The current height of the fence at six feet allows also for looky-loos to easily peek over, which can also cause potential barking issues, which, which we've not had any issues. And it could be prevented by increasing the height of that overall back fence. You know, everyone always loves the idea of moving close to the country with the horses, cows, pigs, chickens, till they wake up in the first cock crowing or cow mooing or the smell of noor. In this instance, cute dogs frolicking in the shire on the other side of an easily scalable fence. When the issue here could be avoided, we think with an ounce of prevention in the same manner that the CMU wall is lining Lone Tree. So it's, I, we suggest a recommendation, and maybe I can chat with the planner later. But a minimum of eight to 10 feet should be considered on the north side, or at least on our property line and potentially the others on the proposed development, which would only affect three of, you know, the residents that are, you know, or two to four, I guess, residents on that side, depending on how you look at the properties, in place of the six-foot Good Neighbor fence. We believe this proactive preventive measure to be sufficient would satisfy the concerns for safety and privacy for us and our future neighbors. We are not opposed to the CMU wall on, on our side. However, we do have some, I think, some aesthetically pleasing ideas that we've kind of seen and would love to discuss those with the planner and the developer. So, and by the way, I have a fantastic idea for the placement of a park. If you're wanting to move it to that back north side, looks like a great spot for us. And if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer. Good, thank you.
Thank you.
At this time, I have no other speaker cards in person, so we will go to Zoom. If you would like to speak, please raise your hand at this time. Maris Solvias?
Hi, thank you so much. Really quick, I wanted to say that I know at the beginning, the whole presentation wasn't done for, for time-wise, but for, I think, the recordings for the future and for like tonight myself, I didn't get a chance to read the full packet. So it would have been nice to see the full presentation from the city. I, I have a couple of questions with, I think you guys did ask or talk about, but I think I just wanted to reiterate. I know it's an HOA, but is this a gated community? That part was a bit confusing because as mentioned, Shadow Lakes is HOA but has parks. I just wanted to make sure that the park was taken into consideration. And what prohibits the developer from saying this is HOA and later doing away from it after everything is built? Who would pay for the maintenance that was, that we were talking about? That would be covered by the HOA? And are there sidewalks with landscaping strips? Because I don't think I saw that on the renderings. And what about, can you guarantee that these new drainages won't have any flood issues as well? Or what's the information for that? And then with the bio-retention, what happens if the homeowner puts in a concrete side yard or anything like that? But really, most importantly, I wanted to ask for you to please deny the dedications. Based on the chart from the applicant, there's no reason we have to take the dedications. It's not what the resident wants in our city. I know I don't want that in our city, not without the right planning behind it. We don't need a dorm room-like building in a single-family residence area. We're not a college town. We don't need to be also this developer's guinea pig. Even the triplexes, those shouldn't be allowed either. Duplexes seem to be the max, I think, that the city council has gone with for low income, but I, I could be mistaken. So please, please, you can deny the dedications and I hope you do. Also, I was wondering, maybe the planning commission should ask the city manager why the planning department would have even allowed this five-bedroom apartment, dorm rooms, whatever you want to call it, to get this far in the application? I thought our city's low density with single homes or duets only. So also, if not mistaken, I thought we've hit our low-income housing numbers or we're set to hit those numbers. So I don't know why the planning department would okay this to even get to you to have this dorm room setting situation. So after hearing all of this too, I wonder if the planning commission should recommend to the city council to maybe update the codes for affordable housing to only single-family lots so that we don't get future developers trying to sneak in things of, of this nature? Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Leanne Alfaro.
Hi. So can you guys hear me?
Yes, we can.
Um, so my husband and I own the lot to the right of the project. And so I have a few questions regarding the project. So I think my first question, which I couldn't seem to find in the, in the documents online, is about a wall between the project and our property. I'm curious as to the height of it and the material that it's going to be made out of. I'm also curious when the wall will go up? If it's going to go up prior to the building starting or after? I also would like more clarification on what the density bonus application is. Also, I, I was listening and they mentioned that this is a private community. Does that mean it's going to be gated? And then also, in looking at the packet, I noticed that it- And then also, in looking at the packet, I noticed that it said over 60% of these homes are two-story houses. And that is a little bit concerning for us, just because when you look, basically where the project is going, that's like our view of Mount Diablo. So it's a little bit sad to think about 60% of those houses going in being two-story there, especially since it's coming into that low-density area. I would really like to see that number of two-story homes lower. And then also with the park, I did have questions about, basically, how that is going to be contained. I mean, it borders our property, so is it going to be like walled in on three sides? I mean, it also borders Lone Tree, so first of all, like, how is it going to be kept safe for children? And then second of all, how is it going to be contained so that there aren't wanderers coming onto our property? So those are my questions.
At this time, Chairperson Roberts, we have no other hands raised.
Oh, wow. Okay, thank you. All right. That being said, I think I'm going to close public hearing. I look for a motion.
Send it.
All in favor? Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, motion carries. At this time, I will open it up for the commissioners' discussion.
Chair Roberts.
Commissioner Floy.
Since we had some questions come in from the public, I'm wondering if we can get some discussion back from Miguel about what the perimeter fencing is going to be like, especially on the side bordering the Alfaro property and along the back there.
Certainly, Commissioner. As proposed, the fencing around the property on the north, east, and west side would be your Good Neighbor fence. On the south side, fronting Lone Tree Way would be the CMU wall.
Right. And I guess the neighbor to the right, as we look at the drawing, was concerned about views of Mount Diablo, so a six-foot wall, a six-foot fence wouldn't really block that view.
Wouldn't. I wouldn't think so, no.
What about a two-story house?
I mean, potentially, if, no, I wouldn't think so. A two-story house in that neighboring zone would have to be setback from that property line. And as you move further away from those homes, you get a better view.
Right, because they appear shorter the farther away you are. All right, let's see, what else did we have? There are, of course, sidewalks in there. I think you mentioned that as far as where people have the retention on their lawns, they cannot pave over that, right?
Correct. That'd be a part of the CCNRs, which would prohibit them from doing anything other than what it's intended for.
All right, and let's see. And, oh, the question about when the fence would be built on the one side. Will the fencing go up before or after construction of the houses?
I actually don't have an indication of which, what would come first, the fencing or the housing. I'm assuming that the fences would come in with every, as each lot develops, because it's its own internal or it's its own fence. So once the home gets built on that lot, that fence would come up. But I believe you'd be able to condition the project to fences at certain times.
Unfortunately, the caller didn't say when she wanted the fences, but I'm assuming she wants them before the construction. I don't know. All right. Okay, those were the questions that I heard that I wanted to hear some answers for from the public. Does anybody want to go first, or, because I got to go first last night?
Well, there's a couple of things on your quest, on the questions, right? Just if, on page 80 is the plot map for single-story, two-story homes, and Lot 32 and 33 are two-story homes.
34, single.
And 34, single. So along the caller's question, there will be two-story homes there, just for clarification of that. And then I think what we heard was that this is not going to be a gated community. Is that correct?
Correct. It's not proposed as a gated community.
Yep. And then Eric, I don't know if you want to address the application process. It's, that was asked about, how did something get this far? I think that's a question that I hear often. And I know, I know the answer, but I think it's an important one to clarify, regardless of what was in a project.
Yeah, through the chair, if I understand the question, I mean, every application is iterative, right? It goes through a process, and it's different for every application. Sometimes applications, when they get to the commission, look relatively similar to the way they were originally submitted. Sometimes they're wildly different. It's dependent on a lot of factors. It could be applicant rethinking things. It could be a result of staff comments. It just really depends. And the timeline varies from project to project as well. We have projects that go on for years and years. This one is about a year and a half, and, yeah, the project did change a little bit. It's still, you know, in the kind of the mid-30s in terms of lot number. The configuration is relatively similar, but details of the project certainly did change over time. And we don't always know when that's going to happen. It's just part of the process. Does that help answer your question?
I think the question was more of, specific to this project, was how did this get that far? And I think from my perspective, is you can work with, and I'm not, I don't want to speak for you, but the applicant can apply, has control over what they apply and what they put in. And as long as it meets state and local codes, you're limited in what you can say, no, you can't do this. And so that's why we're here tonight, because the specific question was around how did the unit that has the five bedrooms get this far? Why did you allow this to get this far? And I think we're limited in terms of how you can, I think, obviously, the opposite of that is you can't really stop that from being presented to us as an option.
Yeah, that's absolutely correct, and I think there's a misconception sometimes that staff is promoting an application or certain aspects of an application. These are not things that staff thinks about. These are things that the applicant does, and then we respond to. And if they are consistent with state law and our local ordinances, then, yeah, we're obligated to process those accordingly.
And just to piggyback on Commissioner Spaulding, that being said, how did the two duets side by side get through the city? Isn't it supposed to be spread apart?
Well, when you say "get through," you mean, how did staff react to it?
Yeah, exactly.
Well, just by nature of them being duets, they're always side by side, so there's no way to...
With two units?
There's no way to create duet units on two adjacent lots and then split them. Now, if you have multiple sets of duets, those would then be dispersed throughout the subdivision. But if you only have one set, and in this case, Lots 11 and 36, by definition, they have to be side by side.
I thought Lot 11 was standalone, and 36 was the five-bedroom. Isn't that what that is?
Correct, but they're constructed like duet units, right? Because they're attached. They have a common connection.
Oh, okay. Commissioner?
A couple of quick questions, and this is towards the city. One of the callers, Alfaro, had mentioned what type of fencing along the side where the park is. I mean, I understand right now it's a Good Neighbor fence, and I'm curious. I know Park and Rec is here too, so I'm just looking for a little feedback. I've been asked a couple of questions, so that way we can go through them all. Was it thought about changing fencing or looking at some different types of fencing when it comes to the park area from safety? And for the lack of words of, you know, kids looking up over the fence, that sort of thing, number one. And then you have an individual who has, who runs K9. Granted, the dogs behave well out there, but I drop my dog off there, they bark, they play, and all that sort of stuff. I personally have a hard time with a, and I don't know if it was discussed with the applicant, so that's why I'm asking. I could say, along that entire area, I would think a, I know it's more cost, but a masonry wall would be a better solution versus a Good Neighbor fence, especially, like I said, that is a business there. I don't believe there's other businesses along there. I could be wrong. I don't know the other neighbors. But I can't see putting a masonry fence along three lots and then, you know, wood fence the rest of the way. If you're going to do it, I feel like you need to do it the whole way. So I'm curious on that. And then I think it was Commissioner Floyer had mentioned about when the walls we built. So I think that may be, could be conditioned to say, because again, there's a business there. So obviously, if they're building homes, dogs, that sort of stuff, that's going to rattle up the dogs and things like that. So obviously, that fence, to me, is, needs to be a priority when we start looking at some of those lots, at least the building and construction of those lots. I think that's, oh, and the other last question, sorry. I believe one of the caller, Marisol, had mentioned about heavy rains and things like that. And I believe, and you can clarify, I believe the applicant mentioned that if there's heavy rains, they're not designed for, you know, tsunami-type rains. However, there's also alternative drainage that's built in. So if those, quote-unquote, overflow, it still can go out into the street, and it still can, you know, permeate down through the asphalt. I see the applicant shaking my head, so I just wanted to clarify that, because that was a question from some of the public. So, sorry, if there's a couple of questions there.
If I can handle the park questions first, yes, absolutely. A wall would be required at that adjacent, between the park and any adjacent parcel. As we vet this, once the, assuming it gets approved and the park is approved for that location, it would be vetted through the Park and Rec Commission, through an ad hoc committee, and then the, and then the Park and Rec Commission, and items like this would definitely come out if they weren't already proposed. So a wall would be required, as well as a two-rail fence in the front where Lone Tree would be, as well as multiple landscape buffer, basically trees. So, but again, that would be as the conceptual of the park goes through the Park and Rec Commission. Those are the items that would be addressed at that point.
So, and sorry, with that, okay, that's great. Is there a reason why that during, prior to this or this getting to us, if a wall was going to be needed to be there, why it wouldn't have already been, quote-unquote, written in or proposed as part of the project, knowing that a masonry wall needs to be by the park? I don't know. I'm looking at both of you, so I'm sorry.
Certainly an item that got missed, absolutely.
And not only that, not necessarily that an item got missed, but the applicant was also still hoping that they would be able to do an in-lu instead of an actual park dedication. And when they submitted their fencing diagram, that's kind of like the fencing that was submitted with that concept, that thinking that the planning commission and city council would rather have an in-lu fee than an actual park dedication, as the applicant had mentioned.
Miguel, may I ask a quick clarification question on page 79 of the agenda packet? Or April, if you want to show my screen for a minute. Oh, April's not going to show my screen for a minute. I'm sorry, I was looking at the preliminary fencing and wall plan. That's on page 79 of the agenda packet, and it's, I was wondering if that shows the masonry wall along the entirety of the Lone Tree Way frontage, and then the location of the Good Neighbor fences?
Yes, it does.
Okay, thank you.
So, the... So the black line with the little squares you can see at the frontage, that would be the masonry wall. And you could see that it's on the frontage of the park. Then the brown lines, those are to represent the Good Neighbor fences.
So I hear what you're saying, that potentially the applicant was hoping or is desiring in-lu and not to have to have Parcel Z there as a park. With that aside, that doesn't answer my question on Lot 25, 26, 27, knowing there's a business that has dog training and dogs and things like that.
If I could, excuse me, if I could jump in here. Josh Smith with DeNovo. Just to answer your question with regard to that, that business. So we do include a mitigation measure, actually, that does include a sound wall along that property line. It's mitigation measure NOI-3. And so more detail is also provided in the noise study, which is included as an appendix to the initial study mitigated negative declaration. So just to answer the question, there is going to be an eight-foot masonry wall. It starts at the far northwest corner of the project property, and it goes about halfway eastward along that northern boundary of the property, covering the entirety of the Tolchinsky property, the K9 Training Center.
So clarification, so approximately, you're saying from Lot 24 to 28 is going to be an eight-foot masonry wall? Because that's not shown in anything we have that I'm aware of.
That's correct. I think the discrepancy, I mean, maybe Miguel can talk more to it, but I think it's just because this is considered a mitigation measure from the environmental analysis perspective. So it's going to be something that's required as a mitigation.
So you're saying that NOI-3 states that? Or is that something that needs to be conditioned by the planning commission to make sure it's inclusive of the requirements if this is accepted?
As a, as a mitigate, I'm sorry. As a mitigation measure, the project has to adhere to all mitigation items, and that being identified as one, they would have to adhere to that.
That's all the questions I have right now. Thank you.
Commissioner Spaulding?
Yeah, I think in regards to the park or in-lu fees, right? I think there's an open question on what we do with this park, right? I think there is a tremendous desire that's been demonstrated by both this commission as well as city council, that each new development has a park included in it and not in-lu fees to ensure that people have access to it. I think that, you know, people have walking access to it. I think the other parks, while they may be within the goals of the general plan, you know, even crossing Lone Tree is like, you know, not the safest street to walk across. And certainly, there's a park that's about 300 yards down the road as I measure on Google Earth. But, so I think, I think that's something we need to work out. It is a little bit different in that it's a potential, well, it's a private road, but it's a public park. And I think we have to figure that out for, you know, certainly for city council or before city council, because it's going to be addressed there if it's, if we can't work it out prior to. I guess my question that leads to that is, okay, so let's say if we, if we say, okay, fine, you can pay the in-lu fees instead of a park, what happens with the land?
The applicant has indicated that if the city were to accept the in-lu fee, then they would use the land for an additional single-family home.
Was that in the packet? Did I miss that?
No, we didn't go into that line of thought for in-lu fee. They do have a note on the, on the, what's it called? On all their plans, where it says Parcel Z for the park, it does have a note saying if the city does not accept this as a dedication, then they would use it to create a... does not accept this as a, um, dedication, then they would use it, uh, to create a, an additional home.
I'm looking at the fence, fencing map, and that's not what it says. So, that's, if that, that, I mean, you answered my question, so that's fine. Um, I, so it gives us an additional thing, but I mean, I, I think that we need to, there's no one here from PD, but to answer that question, but I think we do, uh, need clarification on private road, public park, what is our, you know, how does that, how is that going to work? Because I could see, we've had issues before this commission with private roads, some of the same people who talked tonight, um, were part of that, uh, meeting, and so what I don't want to create is another issue, because if it's, this is a park that others seem to like, who don't live in the neighborhood, I wouldn't want to create, unintentionally create a situation where now we have a conflict between folks who live in the area, but not in the neighborhood of terms of access to that park.
So one of the things the Planning Commission might consider is talking to the applicant about, um, i-if you want to recommend that the, um, application be considered by the City Council favorably in some form, the form that it was proposed in, or, or some of the options that we've talked about tonight, um, you might talk to the applicant about a means of ensuring public access to the park, and consider asking staff to include a condition of approval that would allow public access to the park. That type of condition, or that type of direction, would allow the project to move forward for City Council's decision-making, and also make it known that the Planning Commission had this concern that you wanted addressed.
Thank you. I, I think the other, the other, two other issue or things that I want, would like to hear from Commissioner's feedback on is, is the, the five-unit duet, right, in terms of it. Um, I, I'm not a, a big fan of the solution, I'd rather have, uh, inventory for very low income that is a complete property versus a small room. Um, the, the other thing is, I don't love the location of the unit, I don't like the fact that when you drive in, now you'll be taking a right from, from Lone Tree, um, so maybe not that many cars come that way, but I think the location of it, you're gonna come up, and the home is gonna look significantly different, um, uh, than the rest of the homes in the neighborhood, and so my preference would be to find another lot for it. Um, it can be on a corner, um, I just, I, I would say, you know, without looking at the square footage, cause I know that's of the lot, I know that's an issue, moving it to twelve or potentially to eighteen, because I know, um, you know, moving it to six would give them more space, but it creates the same issue that I don't love in terms of when you drive in, and that would actually be the busier of the two intersections, so, um, yeah, those are my, I think my major issues from, uh, I know we'll get to the design review, but I think that the designs of the homes are very good, all of them, um, including, um, the proposed duet. So, um, I think some of the duets in the past have come forward with lesser-than the rest of the neighborhood, and I think this one is, is not, is my initial impression. Um, so with that all, love to hear feedback from others.
Commissioner?
Here's my perfect world for this. Um, I'm glad you clarified the masonry wall, gentleman from DeNovo, for twenty-four through twenty-eight. Obviously, I, I too would like to see the park there, also, I think based on the lots that are along that side there, uh, I think the park is at point five-six and needs to be at point six-four, or something like that.
Correct.
So I, I think there's room, I'm hoping there's room that that could slide a little bit to allow the park to be there. Um, again, I think that's a big thing. It sounds the applicant does not, is not, um, preference would not be you have the triplex, which I understand, I, I think that can build some different building constraints, and the way you have to design it's gonna be a little tricky and probably not as cost-effective. So with that being said, what I would like to see, and obviously the applicants here, but curious to hear other commissioners, I, I would like to see that five-unit removed, and, and basically have two sets of duets, to get the total four. Um, now again, we've gotta look at, Commissioner Sparling, may they comment that, you know, coming in, I'm looking at the various lots, twelve and eighteen look like they would, you know, they're, they're separated this way, they're not seen as you first come in. Uh, again, I know that the, I don't know, I don't have the, you can't, when you blow it up, you can't see the square footage of the lots and things like that, I don't know if that's doable, but to me, that's, that's kind of my ideal solution or, or situation. I think the streets and, and, it's an interesting concept, one that, like I said, I've been on the Planning Commission, we figured out it was eight years and never saw that, I think it's an interesting concept. Um, I would say if we lived in Tucson, Arizona, and, and we get, uh, you know, flash floods, that probably wouldn't be an ideal situation, but in Brentwood, um, I understand why you're doing it and allow you to get the lot, so it, it's, in a sense, it's a trade-off to get you more lots, is what you're desiring, but I'd like to see two sets of duets, I'd like to see the park increase somewhat. Uh, I, again, I know it's a cost, I, what's it gonna look like over time if you've got a masonry wall halfway down the lot lines, then it goes to wood, good neighbor fencing down and around the corner a little bit, and then back to a masonry wall if, if the park is put in there, so, uh, I know it's a big ask, but I, I, I think about that masonry wall just being along that entire length of the property, so those are kind of my initial thoughts.
Commissioner Blor?
Okay, um, let's see, what I want to talk about first, the park, um, and, uh, I, I appreciate the applicant would probably prefer to do an in-lu instead of the park, but this is a recommendation that will be making the City Council, and I, I have a hard time, um, given everything we've seen this year, to recommend it without a park, so, uh, uh, they could possibly talk to the City Council more about that, but I, I just don't see us being able to do that. Um, about the wall, it, it changes my perspective, but not a lot, knowing that there's already going to be some wall back there, so we could discuss in design review if we want to continue that wall, um, along the backside. Um, it might be advisable, and possibly even down, um, on the right, which I don't know if this, I think this map is actually oriented north, so along the, uh, the east side there. About the, uh, the five-unit, uh, duet, the five, the shared housing, um, I, I think my, my fellow commissioners and maybe people in the community listening to me right now be a little bit shocked by what I'm gonna say next. Um, I don't necessarily hate it, um, and I'll tell you why. If you know where I live, as it happens, and to say that there's nothing like this in Brentwood is true in one sense, but in another, it's not. We have a lot of really big houses in Brentwood, and, um, a lot of those houses, there's people, a lot of people living in them, and I live between two houses that you might consider group homes, um, and it's basically these are roommate situations, um, and the, the makeup of the tenants in those two houses is different. On one side, they're, they seem to be more like a bunch of professionals that are just rooming together, save money. On the other side, um, it seems to be more of a, a situation where the person that owns that house has been my neighbor since I've lived there, and is a very kind person, um, is being supportive of her community and helping some people out. So, um, I don't know the full story on either one of them, but I live between two houses where there's a lot of people living in them, and I don't care, they don't cause me any trouble, they're good people, um, they're always good to talk to, there's, you know, there's, they're not anything that anybody might be imagining, I don't, I don't know what people have in mind, but the fact is, uh, it's expensive living in California, it's expensive getting a rental, and for some people, um, taking a smaller space and a shared space in a large, in a large house makes sense. So I, I don't really hate the, uh, the shared unit duet. I do, um, think that there's a, a good chance that the city will not want to accept it as a dedication, in which case, I think it would be good for us to, uh, spot another duet in here some, somewhere in our recommendation, um, and then they can delete it if they want to do the dedication, but if they don't, then they have, they have one ready to go, so at least we've done something for them in the way of, of our jobs. Uh, as far as the location of the park, going back to that for a minute, being in the front, um, hearing from the Park Department that the, the Brentwood PD would prefer that it be there, that speaks a lot to me, I care a lot what Brentwood PD thinks, um, they're there to keep us all safe, and if, uh, if their recommendation is that's a good location for it, uh, frankly, I'd like to hear more from Brentwood PD in all of our meetings, uh, what they think about what's going on with, anytime they, they want to weigh in, I'm always here to, to hear them. Um, and I've had communications from the public saying that they'd like to hear from BPD as well when we're, we're coming up with conditions, so, uh, that's basically that. As far as expanding the park, I think we, we should do it, um, to meet the, uh, the requirement, and I think we're talking, um, if I did my math right, we're talking about eight one-hundredths of an acre expansion, so I, I'm not sure what that is, but I, I'm, I'm not good with acres, but I'm guessing like, maybe that rule exceeds there is any eight one-hundredth of an acre, I don't know. Um, so I, I think that that's not gonna be too much of a burden, and, um, you know, other than that, I, I really appreciate, uh, the restraint the applicant has shown, I, I know what this could look like if they decided to, uh, come in here and steamroll us, and they've, they've opted not to do that, they seem to care about our city, and, and, uh, I always appreciate that attitude when I see it in an application, that's, those are my comments.
Commissioner Brand?
I personally don't have as much of a grief with the location of that particular duet. Um, I am amicable to the idea of, of essentially moving that to having two sets of duets, and my main reasoning behind that is, you know, we have variety, but we don't have, it's not exclusionary. We have, we would have essentially two separate properties that mirror one another to meet the needs of its residents, um, and I, I think that's, I don't know, to agree with Commissioner Ziegler over here. Um, I did want to bring up the discussion as well regarding the wing lots, and we haven't really talked about it yet, um, where we have one, one property that effectively has seventeen neighbors. Um, I counted them. Um, I don't know if there's a consideration here as far as, cause the liability on that one individual for, what, eleven good neighbor fences on the inside, because don't forget, on the inside of that wall would be another six-foot good neighbor fence to border all of those homes on the north side of the property. Um, it's, like, uh, from a practical sense, I don't know how someone would mow a lawn like that, or just turn it into a dog run. No offense to Mr. Tulchinsky in the audience, um, but, um, I, I see that as a kind of interesting additional border there, and so I, I, we might consider, uh, further discussion on how we might alleviate, uh, the overwhelming burden of, uh, a fence on one resident of a small, smaller, uh, community. Um, I did want to bring up also, I believe, um, Ms. Alfaro on the, on the line brought up, uh, the, uh, the views of Mount Diablo. Now, in, as far as the aesthetics measurement, it was identified as less insignificant impact as far as views, um, of its, you know, areas of character, right, and that includes Mount Diablo. It was listed in here that, uh, let's see, as a result, the project structures would not impede views of Mount Diablo, um, from residents residing in the city of Brentwood, so I don't know what, as far as that assessment was done, was it on the property to the northeast, or was it done similarly somewhere else? Um, I'm seeing kind of a disconnect there, so I'm not entirely sure how to address that, but, um, it's just a, I think a call-out from a, um, impact statement. Um, for continuity's sake, the, having a wall extend from the northwest to the northeast of the property is, it makes sense to me, uh, having it block, presumably between the Ramirez and the Davies property, I guess, kind of makes sense. I, I don't remember, recall where they, where it was specifically identified, maybe, uh, Miguel, you can comment?
Um, yeah, it would be from, uh, the, uh, western portion up to, um, block twenty-eight, I believe.
Okay, so pretty close to that divide, and, okay. Um, and I believe the, uh, the gentleman on the line was gonna probably comment about the MND.
I was just gonna say what Miguel said with regards to the sound wall is, is correct.
Okay, thank you. Um, let's see, the condition of approval for park access, I mean, I, I'm in full, uh, I'd love to see the park need its full extent of point six-four acres, I would love to see it bigger than that, but I, I understand that there's constraints, and we're working in, in minor details here to accomplish a number of goals, and so I, I can appreciate, um, all of our mixed intentions here. Um, to have, you know, guarantee access and such, I did want to call out specifically that the, uh, the parks in this region, there's only one out of those five that actually has equipment on it. Um, you know, Portofino Park is basically like a sidewalk with some grass around it, let's be honest. Um, that's very near my neighborhood, and I've been there many times, uh, and really, the Pistachio's the only one that has some level of equipment, and if we're looking to have, uh, you know, a park, I'd, I think it would also be important to stipulate some type of equipment being, uh, a requirement as part of that, you know, I, I imagine there's some discussion there, but, you know, just having a, uh, I think I said this in another meeting.
Open space?
Open space. Not just open space, it's something to the effect of, uh, like, uh, to meet the needs of a variety of our, um, young residents. Uh, so, um, yeah, those are just some basic comments for me, but, uh, yeah, thank you.
Commissioner Sparling?
One, one other thing that I forgot to mention, on, in terms of my concerns about the duet sitting on the lot that it's at, is that the, the applicant's asked for, um, basically zero side yard setback. Um, and my concern with that is, and I understand why they're asking for it, um, because of the space and what they're trying to build in that lot, but my concern with that is, is I, I think about, when I'm thinking about this project versus other things that have come before the commission, is, is that fair to allow? Um, probably one of the most painful votes I had to make, uh, against a resident was, um, I think in the second year, where resident was reported having an illegal, um, camper cover, I think was what it was, and we had to follow the law, uh, and ask him, or tell him, we didn't ask him, that he had to take it down, right? And so this is, to me, if we, if we allow zero setbacks from the side yard, then we just told that, that if I'm interpreting the, what this correctly, we're basically saying, well, you can't have it, but for this lot, they can, right? And I think that's, to me, that doesn't strike as being, it's a different situation, I get it, but it, to me, doesn't seem fundamentally fair.
Can I, can I jump in real quick through the chair? Uh, on the zero-foot setback for the duet units, you, you actually have to have that on the side because of the, the connection? Are you concerned more about the other?
The other side.
Portions of the yard?
Yeah, yeah, because the way I read the waiver is zero.
True, but if you look at the way the, the two, the two units, the two duet units are plotted on the properties, they will have other yard space, it's just you have to identify zero where they connect, so it, it's not like they're gonna be built out to the other property lines as well, if that makes sense? They're really only connected on the?
I understand you need to have it on the inside, and what I'm referring to is the other side, you know, they could, you know, I know what's plotted on the map, right, but it could, it could be built that way as well, so that there is no side yard, right, um, on the other side. I know that they're, they're connected, right, so there is no side yard, I get that, it's one building, right, with a wall, um, but the other side is what I'm concerned about. So if we, as long as we put language within that, that, then that's fine, but the way I interpreted the waiver on page... But the way I interpreted the waiver on page, I'm not sure I have the page printed out, but it's, yeah, it's the, goes through minimum lot, because I printed it, minimum lot, goes through that. So as long as we call that out, then that's fine. But I think that that was my, when I read that, right, and it's all about what's written versus what's in, you know, a picture of, right, then that would be, I would be okay with that, as long as we get clarification on that and it's in writing.
Can we look at page eighty in the packet?
Eighteen, did you say?
Eight, zero. It's just got a, the property line is marked on that, and it also maps out the duet, so it kind of shows what the lot would look like.
If we go back to page forty-eight for just one moment, which actually shows the language that I think Commissioner Sparling is talking about, is this what you're referring to, Commissioner?
Yes.
So if it was the pleasure of the commission, these staff could modify that language to clarify that the zero lot lines only apply as to the shared portion of the building and not as to the exterior perimeter of the lots, or something along those lines?
Perfect, thank you.
Commissioner?
One thing I did want to acknowledge, to say thank you to the staff, because there's a lot of work that went into this, and thank you to the applicant. It sounds like you're amenable to some different things and whatnot, and I did feel, I know Commissioner Sparling needed to comment. I think the designs look beautiful from an architectural standpoint. I know there's a few conditions, because there are a lot of corner lots, you know, to wrap around some of the architectural features, and I don't think that's going to be a problem. But I did want to just mention that, to say thank you to the staff for everything you put into it, thank you for the applicant, but I wanted to say that the designs are very nice, so.
Well, okay, it's my turn. I am still stuck on the five-bedroom kitchenette, and I do appreciate Commissioner Floyd's statement. But even in Section Eight with low income, folks have their own space, they close their door, and they have privacy. When they have rooms, having five bedrooms, five kitchenettes, five bathrooms, and a space that has to be shared communal, I just don't see how that new concept, which you've not tried anywhere else, is being tried here in Brentwood, the city of Brentwood, goes over well with the residents. I find so many issues with this as a mother. If I had children, here I am in a room, and there's someone on the other side of me. There's just too many things that might go wrong. And if you're saying that the city is overseeing the management of that, that's a real big burden for the city. I don't know that, and I can't speak for the city, but it's a burden. Because now we're vetting people, we're trying to figure out if it's going to be a good match in this facility. Again, it's not something that we've had here in the city of Brentwood, setting a precedent for others to come in and do the same. I don't know that that's how I see the city. So it is a concern for me. That being said, I need to, and I think that we spoke to you possibly considering those options, something that we can recommend to City Council if the commission is so inclined. But this is something that I personally feel very strongly about as it relates to having a design like this in the city of Brentwood and setting a precedent. I know that it is completely within your right to do so. I get that. It just doesn't seem like it's fair for folks that are falling on hard times and/or, if that's what we want to call it, low income, to not have a shot at having their own space as opposed to having to share space with, for other individuals that they don't know. So that's my takeaway on the project. Everything else seems to be in check. That is a concern of mine. And with that said?
Through the chair?
Yeah.
We've all discussed a couple of different options or ideas, between fences, between multiple duets, language on the zero lot line, park increase, things like that. I'm wondering if the commission would be open to listening to the applicant after she's heard what we've all talked about, if there are any things. I know she's talking to her folks back there, maybe say there's some things that we've mentioned that they're willing to do or concede to in working with each other to come up with an agreeable solution.
I agree. So if the applicant would like to come back to the front and perhaps address some of these concerns and/or recommendations, that'd be great.
Absolutely. Yes, thank you for calling me back up. So I understand your concerns, I truly do. I'm listening to every one of them, and I know that they're real and that they're honest concerns. One thing I did want to just touch on, so with this shared housing unit, I understand the feelings around it. It is not, though, meant to replace, just like all of these different types of affordable housing products. They're not meant to replace one another. I know that you mentioned Section Eight housing, where at least even in that environment, you're looking at a shared, you're not looking at a shared housing unit, you're looking at a unit that is for yourself and whoever else you invite, which would probably be children. But this is not meant to replace that or to do away with that. It's simply meant to provide another source of affordable housing, in this case, a transitional housing. And again, transitional housing, sometimes it brings a connotation that may not be the most desirable, but it could even be for young professionals, people that are just entering into corporate world and just want to be able to, you know, save their money and save their paychecks. For students that are going to, you know, either getting their masters, maybe students that just graduate from high school. So it can be a lot of different options and a lot of different possibilities in that scenario. So given where I'm hearing about the potential of a duet option in lieu, I'm open to entertaining that as it goes forward to council. And that's what I had already discussed with Miguel as well, that if that were an option that is posed, I would be open to considering that, okay? So regarding the duet unit, I think that kind of gives a little bit of a perspective, Parkland. So, oh, and one other thing, I do want to just mention this just real briefly. Did I bring my note up here? I think I did. Oh, here it is. So there was a little bit of talk just about the straight duet unit. So I just pulled up a City Council agenda meeting minutes. It was from April 25th of this year, where it was directed by council to staff just to start looking into possibly doing away with the duet units. But it was decided at that meeting, that the council decided that they did want to keep the duet unit as a potential affordable type of housing. So I just want to allude that, even though it hasn't been done, even though I haven't built it, I mean, I'm a traditional single-family detached home builder, and so, of course, in compliance, I mean, these are various options for builders to be able to have different ways to fulfill the requirement. And so it was decided that, yes, let's keep this as an affordable housing type. And that was something that was decided after staff had presented different options. So just respectfully, I just wanted to allude to that. Parkland, so on the Parkland, I understand, I mean, I came tonight, talked to Miguel a little bit earlier before we came to the hearing, saying, Miguel, I'd like to present this for consideration, that, you know, because we do meet the criteria in the code, and I've had it right in front of me. But the code does allow, and it actually states in the municipal code, that if the project is less than fifty units, pay the in-luffy. So it is not a requirement, I mean, I do want to say that. I'm a good neighbor, I mean, I don't, I do want to build a subdivision and design a subdivision that is going to be palatable to the commission, palatable to the City Council, that's going to play by the rules and be able to follow the guidelines, et cetera. But I do want to just state that, that it is not required to build a park, because this is not fifty or more. Now, if I moved forward with maximizing the unit count, then I would do that respectfully. So I'm open to entertaining it, I'm hearing everyone loud and clear, but I just want to state that it is not something that I'm required to do. I'm open, I'm hearing what you're saying. But we did choose that area for the park. And of course, that, you know, final acreage, it's going to be subject to your general plan policies, et cetera, and that's why we kind of put the approximations in the conditions of approval. And then, I guess, last but not least, I know that I had mentioned, we have our council, her name is Chelsea McLean, with Holland and Knight. She is very astute and can maybe summarize some of the questions that have come up around the discretion on the dedication or acceptance of the duet unit. I know, I think she tried to speak a little bit earlier, but actually, she's on the screen. Maybe if she can just add a little bit of context and perspective. Do you want to go ahead?
Sure. Good evening, my name is Chelsea McLean, I'm a partner at law firm of Holland and Knight, and we spend a lot of time tracking and implementing the housing laws. Jackie, as, you know, as my favorite clients do, spend a lot of time looking about compliance with the existing zoning code. And with respect to this particular question of the dedication of the unit, we read the code in its Section 17.725.004D as requiring the city to grant the affordable housing credit. So that section says that an applicant may dedicate an onsite or offsite affordable unit to the city's program, and then each unit dedicated to the city shall equate to the construction of two affordable units. So we're, in this new regime of tracking housing laws, very focused on mayes and shalls. And so again, as part of the team's efforts to comply with the code, that is what led us to this proposal to include the unit for dedication to the city, and again, read it to require the city to grant the two affordable units as the, in exchange for that dedicated unit.
Okay, thank you. Thank you.
Of course.
Any questions from the commissioners? Any more questions from the commissioners on this? Hearing none? Thank you so much. Is there something more you'd like to speak to?
Just one more, yes, if you don't mind.
Sure, of course.
I heard, I'm sorry, I missed your last name, Ryan and Megan. We've met before, I understand their concerns, I understand the mitigation measure in the environmental document, I'm in compliance, okay, so I'm fine with that, understood?
Okay, I appreciate that.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you.
Madam Chair. For the sake of the record, we just wanted to note that the city's legal counsel does take a very different opinion as to whether or not the city is in fact required to accept this offer of dedication. Counsel for Miss Cino noted Section 17.725.004D that covers the dedication of affordable units to the city of Brentwood. That entire section is prefaced by the following, and I'll just read a small portion of it. Quote, "As an alternative to constructing affordable units on site, a residential developer may propose one of the alternative equivalents set forth below to meet the requirements of Section 17.725.003. Such proposed alternatives shall be processed in accordance with Section 17.725.005 of this chapter." If you consult that 17.725.005, it talks about taking each proposal for satisfying the city's affordable housing requirement to the city council with a recommendation for the council's consideration. So it is our contention that it is the city's determination as to whether or not it needs to accept any offer of dedication, and that is not offered by right to applicants. So that's the nature of that dispute, just so the commission has the full picture there.
I appreciate that clarification. So it is proposed, it is not a shall, it is a proposed.
That is our contention, yes.
Thank you so much for that clarification.
Through the chair, I would just, I know we've been focusing a lot on the map, which makes a lot of sense. Before motions, or we start narrowing down what we would like to move forward with, do we want to discuss the landscaping plan as well as the design, actual designs of the home, and just get everyone's opinion on that, even if it's, I'm fine with it, right? So I don't want to not discuss that before we move forward.
Okay, I will open that up. Commissioner?
Sure. Yeah, I think Commissioner Sparling has brought this up multiple times when it comes to landscape. I know it does go back through the city and whatnot, and I'm sure that the applicant will understand that we're trying to be earth-friendly, drought-tolerant-type materials. I can say the industry I'm in, I know I had a conversation with the city, I, so I'll say it here, with Park and Recs here as well. The industry I'm in is in insurance, as an insurance broker. And California is in some unprecedented times right now. And I'm seeing insurance companies not, I have brand-new homes that are being built in Brentwood that have tan bark in the front and a few decorative trees, that they will not accept because there is not enough barrier for fire protection. Because there's tan bark and a few decorative trees, brand-new homes, and we moved in. So it's something that I brought up to the city, and I think going forward, it's something they're going to start looking at and discuss with parks, is how do you come up with some new, and I think the builders need to think about this too, is how do we come up with landscape designs that are drought-tolerant, but also fire-resistant, basically? There was a article, or not an article, but a demonstration about two small little, they looked like outhouses, one had tan bark up against it and trees, one had a five-foot barrier of cement or rock or whatnot. The one went up in about less than five minutes, the other one stood there for forty-five minutes. So in the event of a mass fire, you know where you want to live. So I'm just saying something, as Commissioner Sparling's talking about, not, he's not trying to be, you know, funny about this, because he brings it up all the time, but I think landscaping, we need to really start thinking about what we're doing with our landscaping ideas and objectives as a city. But then also, from a builder's standpoint, I think there's some things that they can start to look at that will help facilitate insurance companies wanting to come back to California right now, because they're all, a lot of them are exiting the homeowner's market, so. So that was the first thing, and then what else did you ask about? Oh, there's, well, I already mentioned the designs. I like the designs of the homes, I think they're beautiful homes. Whoever's going to, you know, move into something like that is going to be proud of the ownership. I just think they're really nice designs.
As long as they can get it insured. The other thing I bring up is just, you know, I brought this up before, and I know it's not a, lawn does meet the requirement, and this is my opinion, not necessarily the commission's opinion, is that we allow landscape plans to include lawn, and then the last, most of the time I've lived in Brentwood, we've been told to not water our lawns. And so what other applicants have done with their landscape plan is, we've had at least one have substituted lawn for artificial turf, which developers can buy at a cheaper rate and install. And if an individual homeowner wants to put in lawn, they can. It's going to be a lot cheaper than going the other way, and it actually would help too, also with potentially, you know, the design of it, and it looks just as good. So that's something certainly, when you get to the final landscape plan, would be, would love to see that lawn replaced. But other than that, the landscape plan that I saw, other than the five-foot barrier that Commissioner Ziegler talked about, was good, as well as I've already stated that the designs of the actual homes are, you know, very good as well. So I'm okay with the designs.
Commissioner Floyd?
Yeah, the homes are beautiful, they're nice. As far as the landscaping, I'm fine with the landscaping. I'm supportive in general of the idea of making sure the properties are insurable. And there are others on the commission more experts than I am on how to make that happen, but I would be supportive of any kind of motion that would try to make that happen.
Commissioner Brand?
I think I'll just echo with a lot of what's been said here. As far as, well, talk with the landscaping first, is it seems like there's a great variety. We've got a tree in front of every house. It's very consistent with what we see in most of our wonderful neighborhoods. I'll say, I think Ms. Valles had a question on the phone about the landscaping along the sidewalk. It looks like there is pretty sufficient landscaping, at least according to my eye, all the way around it. So that's, that's great to see. The homes, they look beautiful. It seems like there's a really nice variety as far as craftsmen, French something or other. And no complaints from me on that. The home sizes are pretty consistent with what you see in this kind of section of Brentwood as well. So it's nice to see that consistency there, too.
Okay, great. I agree that the homes look great. Commissioner Ziegler communicated that it's kind of hard to find insurance for a lot of these new homes that are popping up. Has that been the experience that you are, is that the trend that you see now?
Without giving the hour dissertation, yes.
So would that categorize as a hazard or a safety issue? If a house can't be insured, it's exposed, is it not?
So I am unaware of any particular standards in the general plan or zoning ordinance that speak to the insurability of a structure. Eric may know of something that I am unfamiliar with. But I think this is a relatively new phenomenon in California insurance law. And I would defer to Commissioner Ziegler on that. But we are more recently finding this to be the case than was the case when our general plan was written. So I don't think we have anything in there addressing that issue.
Okay, that's something that I, we can talk later about, but it is a concern. I find it to be a safety issue. If I can't insure my home, I can't secure it. But Commissioner Ziegler?
Well, as our city attorney said, I mean, this is relatively new. Over the last, you know, three to five years, it's been building a defensible space. You'll start hearing that more and more. At this point in time, I don't think the city nor us, council right now, it's not our purview in a sense. That's why I brought it up at a meeting prior. And then when I sat with city yesterday, just said, I think, planning commission going forward in the city as they come up with design standards and things like this in collaboration with builders, I think it's something that they need to take into consideration.
Agreed. Okay, thank you. That being said, I will go ahead and move forward with a commission motion. Is there a motion?
Through the chair. So can I highlight, I think the applicant came up, so I just want to kind of throw these, these ideas out. And keep in mind, whatever we are, recommendations, we're making, they're just that. We're making recommendations to city council. And they're ultimately making a decision. But, you know, one thing we talked about, so whoever, if they're looking at making a motion for or against, we talked about adding a condition approval for, about the park access, just to confirm, to make sure that public has park access there. We would, we would like to see, I hear what the applicant's saying, being the good neighbor. But I'd like, it is a small amount, but to see the park increase to the .64 acres. And it sounded like the applicant is amenable to two duets, which I think they can work out the lots, the specific lots with the, with the city prior to going to council. And that would satisfy the needs from low income. And then I guess the last one is just the verbiage. Our city attorney, I think it was on page 47, 48, just modifying the zero lot line verbiage to the, basically saying to the internal wall of the duet, to something of that effect. I'm looking at the attorney to make sure that's not part of a motion, but just, I think we're, does that kind of make sense what I'm saying there?
Yes, so right now it reads waiver for the duet lots to be one-foot side, or zero-foot side yard and zero-foot rear yard. And we could amend that to add only where the duet units share a common wall. Setbacks along the perimeter of the duet lots shall be as otherwise required or waived in this approval. So that might be another way to specify the extent of those. I'm looking at the applicant to ensure that that's clear in your mind as well.
We're on page 47?
Yes.
Okay.
So if I'm right, the first, if we're looking at motions, the first resolution is adopting the MND and the MMRP. And I don't think anything we discussed or that I just mentioned would fall under that. So I think at this point in time, I would make a recommendation to adopt Resolution 23-038 as written. Up through the attorney.
Thank you. And just before the commission votes, so staff understands and can assess whether any modifications are needed to the mitigated negative declaration resolution. Is the, is, is the ultimate proposal going to be to recommend that the city council approve the project as proposed by the applicant and accept the dedication? Or is the ultimate approval going to be swap out the five-unit shared housing for one set of traditional duets on lots 11 and 36, and another set of duets on another two lots in an area to be determined?
That is what I would like to propose, but I'm, I'll look at fellow commissioners.
The second piece is, is what I believe you were making a motion on, correct?
Correct, but I think, I think our city attorney is making sure if that's the direction we're going before we adopted Resolution 23-038, that the follow-on to that would be what I just started to mention.
I second it.
Well, wait, before we do that, we have questions, maybe. I know I do.
Okay, please.
The MND is where the, the sound wall is. And we were contemplating extending that sound wall across the back of the property. Would we do that in the MND, or would we do that in the design review if we chose to do that?
I think it's the design review.
That would be in the design review. Okay. And is, I heard some discussion before about the satisfaction with the current location of the existing duet. I'm fine with where it's at. Is everybody fine with it now?
I mean, I'm, I'm not, but, you know, you need three votes, right? So I would like to see it moved to another lot. And I'm not saying it has to be 12 and 18, but I think they can work with the city to move them to, I just, I think it, and my reasoning is, is because of our inclusionary policy, right? We don't want...
People to feel isolated.
Yeah. And it feels like people don't want the five-bedroom duet. We haven't voted on that, but that's what it feels like, right? So my, my purpose for moving it is because it's so different from the other models. Although it looks good, it's so different that I don't want it to be when you first come in, right? And that's the only reason why. So I don't need to necessarily pick the lot because I know there's some math involved in this. And I don't like picking lots up and changing things here. That's something that the staff can work with the applicant on. But I would be in favor of moving that, which I know you may need to move up the moderate home as well. But I am in favor of moving the lot.
So would we be doing that in the tentative map approval? And, okay, and we're okay with sending over a tentative map approval without a fully drawn map?
Well, I don't think we're going to get one for partial reason is because the park is, one, not the correct size, even though it's in the conditions of approval. But if, we have to decide whether we're going to accept up the park there, which I don't know that we have enough information to change it. But also, we don't have an answer to the question of whether it's public or private. I think we believe we know the answers, but we don't know that. And so if there's a major change, if it, if we, we have to decide, in my opinion, whether do we want a park or do we want in Lufy's? I believe that a park should go in the neighborhood, but that's my opinion. Because that's what we've been doing with all of their developments and listening to city council for the last three years. That seems to be their trend of having a park. They can change it to in Lufy's if they want. But the reason why we're not going to get a final map is because if it's changed in Lufy, now there's going to be a home there, maybe two there. And I would say, I would specify in our recommendation, if we can, and this may be getting too specific, if they decide to go with an in Lufy, that a duet should not go on that lot. Because it's, it's the same thing as 11 and 36. It's right when you come in. That it would, it would create the same issue that I'm, I'm trying to move away from, which is more, a different feel when you go in for, for, into the development.
So that's another mapping consideration. So we can probably get through motion A then.
So just to break in here, so my purpose in asking that question is to the commission's ultimate direction here was that so we could ask Josh from De novo to join us back on the line for a minute to confirm that the deletion of the shared housing unit and the addition of another set of duets would not necessitate changes to the mitigated negative declaration that had been prepared. I don't think it should, but I'm not the expert there. So if we could get De novo back on the line for a minute, if they're still available, Miguel?
Hi there. So just to, excuse me, just to clarify, how many total units are we talking in that case?
It would be 37 units.
Okay, so that, that's all covered, that in the memo. I don't know if Miguel, that's part of the packet. But we did do it, basically a supplementary analysis, analyzing up to 40 units. And what we found there was that there were no significant impacts. The changes would be, I mean, the differences would be very minor. So we wouldn't need to modify the MND?
Then staff doesn't need to request any modifications to the resolution recommending approval of the MND.
So I'll go back and make a, just to make the motion to restate, we recommend adopting Resolution 23-038 as written.
Second. As written or as communicated earlier?
We don't have to change anything on that one. That one is, is fine the way it is.
All right, okay.
So yes, as written.
I'll second it.
I'm spoiling already seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. I look for a motion on Resolution 23-039 on the vesting tentative subdivision map.
Through the chair, this resolution specifically contemplates the five shared housing units.
This one here?
Yes, and does not mention a second set of duets. So if the planning commission wishes to make that change and recommend that change to the city council for their consideration, we can do a couple of things. One, you can give staff a five or 10-minute recess, and we can put together some language for your review. Or we could, well, that would be the best, actually.
Well, let's do that. Let's go into recess for, for five minutes, 10 minutes? Okay, very good.
Okay, the commission is back in session. I think we left off with a motion that the city was working on in terms of the narrative. If you could share that with us, and that would be on Resolution 23039, the vesting map.
That's right, so I'm going to ask Ms. Drummond to share my screen so the commission can look at what the staff has modified over the recess. See if I can make that a little bigger. So we've added a recital to indicate that at your meeting you wish to recommend the project with slight variations to the city council. In your findings, we have changed this sentence to indicate that the project would provide two sets of duet units for total units, which would provide two very low-income units and one low-income unit. This would still achieve the state density bonus law eligibility and provide units sufficient to meet the city's affordable housing obligation.
Katie, question on that? So it's four total units, but I see two very low and one low income.
So there's still one unit outstanding, is that what you're pointing out? Yes, so that would not be deed restricted to any certain affordability requirement. That could be a market rate unit. Right, because they only need four, they're already providing one moderate unit.
Got it.
Okay. So the next set of changes is the same, it just indicates the two sets of duet units and the single-family home size range. Since the second set of duets have yet to be designed, we can't list what their square footage would be here yet, so that's been taken out. Can you turn on your mic?
I'm sorry, I'm confused. You're gonna make two sets of duet units, and then you're gonna make two sets of duets, so four altogether, or?
That was my understanding. Two sets of duets would be four units total. Of those four units, at least three of them would need to be deed restricted to affordable housing levels to satisfy both the density bonus law and the city's local affordable housing ordinance. However, that does leave the third and final unit as not restricted by income level.
Right, I was just noticing that A and B both reference two sets of duet units, but I guess this is in a different context for goal H1. Oh, you want, all right, okay, thank you, sorry.
No, please stop me if anything seems amiss. Here we've taken out the reference to the shared housing units and indicate that the applicant will meet the density bonus requirements as set forth above, so that's talking about the new second set of duet units. These changes would correct the unit count from 40 to 37 and correct the overall density This would reflect that there are now four affordable homes instead of seven in the Same thing, changing the number of units and the total density. With regard to the satisfaction of the density bonus law, this sentence has been modified to provide that the proposed project is proposing to provide at least 5% of the units. So, just a factual correction with the new configuration. We have left the requested waivers largely as written, except for two, the first of which responds to Commissioner Sparling's concern that the zero-foot setbacks only apply to those portions of the duet lots that share an adjoining wall. And then the setbacks along the perimeter of the duet lots would be as otherwise required or waived in this approval document. And then, since we do not at this time have a map indicating where that second set of duet units would be, it's not possible for the commission to know whether additional waivers would be required in order to accommodate those duets on another lot or another two lots within the development. So this is written as a catch-all to say that the commission recommends approving relief from any additional development standards that may be identified to accommodate a second set of duet units so long as that relief would not have a specific adverse impact on public health or safety, nor would it be contrary to state or federal law. That is rather broad, but it gives the staff and the applicant the chance to work out what those additional waivers, if any, might be. I don't know if any would be necessary. Is the commission comfortable with that language, or do you wish to revise that?
Is this where we would get rid of the wing lots if we were going to do that?
So you have done that up above in this first?
In the first part.
Elimination of the transition lot requirement for lots along the perimeter of the project.
The other clarification, it may not be here, it may be on the actual map, or we had had a discussion about moving the lots of where the duets are located. Is that, that's not addressed in here yet, correct?
That's not addressed in here, it would be in the conditions of approval, and we'll get to those in just a minute. This just indicates that the applicant's not asking for a concession at this time, so we'll make that correction. And then we get down to the actual conditions of approval. We've highlighted some of the language just to make it easier for staff to find. This condition requires the final map to be substantially in conformance with that alternate preliminary lotting plan, Commissioner Flor. That's the one that showed the project without the wing lots. And we've modified that to say, "Permittee shall modify said map to include a second set of duet units on a lot to be determined by the city council. No shared housing unit shall be approved or constructed under this map." And I'm wondering if this would be a good location. Commissioner Sparling, can you repeat what you wanted to make sure we captured in the conditions? Sorry.
The moving of the location of the lots for the duet, the duet today is at 11 and 36. Moving it to an appropriate lease-size lot that is, I think typically the council has said they would like those on the corner. I personally don't, I don't know that the commission feels the same way that they have to be, but moving it out of that current lot, as well as the second duet unit as well.
And you'll forgive me, is there consensus on the commission that that is the desire of the commission to ask that the existing duet units be moved to another location?
I'm fine with it, that it be moved to a different location.
I have no preference on that.
I'm fine moving it.
Sorry to jump in, but I believe we spoke to the applicant about this, and just to clarify, would the applicant be comfortable with moving the duet lot?
So, this is a recommendation, in my opinion, maybe our, maybe you should.
This is a recommendation to city council. And at that point, the applicant and city council can have a go at it, but this is our recommendation to city council.
Thank you. Yes, thank you.
Okay. So, moving on. These next few conditions address the park, and I think we had parcel X in there from an old map perhaps, so just correcting it to parcel Z. Because you are reducing the total number of lots, the parkland requirement would decrease slightly as well, right? So it would go from .64, Miguel has calculated to .59. So we've reflected that update in here, and also reflected that the commission wishes to make it accessible for public use, the park for public use. So those are the changes, you see the .59 here again. Just the name of the parcel. And then there's not much else until we get down here. "The internal roadways shall be privately maintained with public utility and emergency vehicle access easements dedicated." Staff's proposing taking out, unless they are designed and built to current city standards, the satisfaction of the city engineer, because I believe the city engineer has indicated that he wishes those roadways to remain privately owned and maintained. Mr. Backlauer, is that correct?
Based on what was proposed on the tentative map, yes. However, I know the applicant wished to leave the stricken language in, in the event that city standards either change to accept it, or they redesign the streets to meet city standards. So I'm okay with keeping it.
Okay. All right, that was the last change. So if that captures your direction, then we can move forward with a vote on this resolution. If there are additional changes needed, please let us know. I think that captures everything that you had discussed here.
Okay, well, thank you so much, Katie. Are there any more questions for council or additions to the language that has been updated? All right, then I will entertain a motion for Resolution 23039 and the vesting tenanted map.
I make a motion to adopt Resolution Number 23-039 as updated this evening.
I second it. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Any nays? Motion carries. We are now at Resolution 23040 to approve the design review.
And I'll just ask April to stop sharing my screen for one minute so we can sort of reload and go through this one. This one does have a few changes as well, and we haven't worked through all of those yet, so we'll do that together now. April, if you'd be so kind as to share my screen again. Let me see if I can make this a little bigger for everyone. So Eric has kindly gotten a head start on this for us. It updates the number of units and includes the four duet units and scratches any reference to the five-bedroom shared housing. We would ask the planning commission's permission to add that additional recital about you making changes to the project as proposed here. We would cut and paste that from the other resolution. And then scrolling down. Eric's corrected the density here to 2.27 to reflect the decrease in the number of Just updated the design resolution number. Eric, are there any further changes here? The map approval. Okay, the only thing I would point out here is that this resolution does require the applicant to fulfill all of the mitigation measures. Those mitigation measures, as mentioned by the De novo consultant tonight, include the construction of a masonry wall along the portion of the project that backs up to the neighbors. That is covered in this Condition 25 here. If the commission has any further changes, we can discuss them, but that is what staff has identified to reflect the direction you've provided tonight.
So that's where the wall, it would be masonry, and then it would transition to a good neighbor fence?
That's what's currently provided in the mitigation monitoring and reporting plan,
Commissioners, any comments, anything to add to?
Well, we did have some discussion about extending it and not having that break in the back. I don't have a sense how everybody's feeling about it right now.
I mean, it's gonna be an additional expense for sure for the applicant, and I think that the, you know, I know we can't do this like we would in commercial, like if I do this, I can do that, right? Because that would be this for that, and that doesn't work in this. But, I mean, I think that the applicant's been very flexible with what we've proposed so far, and so I think from a cost standpoint, I think just leaving the wall as it is in here, because it's only really needed on those lots, and then a good neighbor fence in my opinion would be fine along the rest of the back wall, what I call the back wall, right the north side.
Are we okay with the height?
Yeah, I mean, I think the whole idea was, as discussed, was, the biggest concern was the two areas. One is where the business was residing on the other side of the wall, from a safety and noise standpoint with the dogs, and we've gotten that taken care of from De novo, they explained that. And then the other concern I had was specifically the park, but that we're also told that from our parks director that if a park is put there, then that would also be a masonry wall there. So I do tend to lean with, at first I was like, yeah, the whole way, but almost echoing what you just said, I mean, I think the applicant has been very flexible. You're talking, when Commissioner Rand was saying, you know, you got 10 people, how many walls, inside walls, they gotta repair that sort of stuff, in this case from Lot 28 around the corner type of thing. It's kind of a one-on-one where they're gonna share a cost of rebuilding or having to replace a fence, so I'm okay with as-is, the way it's described currently.
I would like to play devil's advocate just for a second. If the purpose of the wall is to keep people from like peering over the wall or hopping the wall and interacting with a dog, I would point out that building the wall halfway is going to mitigate the noise, but it's not gonna mitigate the concern that the neighbor had that somebody would be hopping a wall, because, yeah, the people in Lot 27 and 28 won't, but who knows, the people in Lot 29 might. So that would be my only concern, is how the neighbors would be impacted.
But they'd be jumping into another, I guess I'm confused, if I pull up the map, you're going from, I think, I'm going from memory, like Lot 24 to 28, and then you go 29, 30, 31 this way, that's just budding up against just a neighbor. It's not the business any longer.
Right, but I don't think those neighbors are necessarily fenced off from each other on Bonnie Lane. I've been on Bonnie Lane. So, I mean, you could, a child living on Lot 29 could hop that fence and then run over to the dog kennel, and I don't think there's anything to stop him, I'm not really sure. I think the neighbors have left, but...
Well, I can say that I know for a fact that they, and because I board my dog there, so, I mean, the entire area is fenced, like a chain-link fence, not his property line per se, he has fencing there, but then where the dogs are, there's additional fencing in there. So there's multiple layers of protection from that standpoint.
Fair enough.
Hopefully I said it right and he'll stay okay.
Well, that said, with the revised verbiage, I am entertaining a motion for Resolution 23040 on the design review.
I make a motion to adopt Resolution Number 23-040 as updated this evening.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Okay. I think we are done. Thank you. Informational reports from the committee and upcoming meeting schedule, transplan?
Last meeting was canceled.
Design review subcommittee?
Have we met since we, the last one we did? The house over in Apple Hill? So we did meet. I'm saying, did we meet, or was that before the last meeting?
You did meet.
We did meet. Yeah, we had two, a home, we had three options, three things, right? Four, you keep adding on, three. One was a home, beautiful home over in Apple Hill, it was on a lot that had been undeveloped. They just had to come in, they had made some changes, and staff felt it was necessary to bring back to us because, just for various reasons, whether it was some material and just some changes based on when they originally designed it and where they're now, they wanted to make some minor modifications, but Commissioner Flor and I both, the changes they made looked great, so we didn't, we weren't really concerned with it.
Yeah, I was just gonna clarify, the three items were, it was the new home in Apple Hill, the modifications were on St. Martin, which is off of Grant Street, kind of by Minnesota, and then the third was a color change for the new Safelite building.
Oh, the new Safelite, Safelite Auto Glass. It was interesting, because they showed us, they're trying, very similar to another applicant that came before us that was changing the branding and colors, they wanted to make some changes there, and we came to an agreement, because they came with one, and then I think kind of came away with a different view once Commissioner Flor and I started pointing out some of the colors and whatnot, and I think everyone will be very happy when they see the final product, so.
That's great. Thanks. No land use and development canceled. Request for future agenda items.
So, I don't know if this is a future agenda item, but I know it's something that is, seems relevant to the discussion tonight and future home developments that might come up, but I think the defensible space option needs to be discussed as quickly as possible, because I know if we wait for zoning updates and we wait for objective guidelines, there are gonna be people who submit projects that are locked into the current requirements. And I know this is all new, but to me it feels like we should be looking at something, because the last thing I want to do is, I think all of us would want to do, is approve a home development and then have people who can't get home insurance because the way we've designed it, and we have an applicant who doesn't want to build defensible space because they don't have to.
Yeah, I concur, and more specifically, I'd like to speak to the safety issue of not being insured with the new home development. So there are three prawns, there's historical, federal, state, health and safety. And to me, it's a safety issue if you are purchasing a home and you can't get insurance. That's something that I'd like to have more discussion on. Just to, for clarification, we've been trying to figure out how all of this new housing element that has been put upon our planning commission ties our hands, and we've not had the opportunity to push back because it's law, with the exception of these three instances. And one of those instances, I believe an argument can be made for safety and health. So I'd like us to look at that and look at that very seriously, because if you can't insure your home, that is a health and safety issue. I know that it's new, I know that it's new, but it's something that I'd like for us to at least speak more to.
Yeah, and just real quickly, since this item isn't on the agenda, it's being brought up as part of a potential future agenda request, I want to make sure the commission knew that the council's gonna be holding a workshop next week ahead of its regularly scheduled meeting to basically kick off the permanent objective design standard process, and I think that might be a good spot to kind of fold this issue in. We'll do what we can to make that happen, and that's certainly first up on the docket in terms of this focus code update that staff's embarking upon.
Appreciate that.
And please feel free to reach out to staff, myself in particular, if you have questions about how that process is moving forward, but again, if you want to attend or participate in the next week's meeting.
That's great.
Thank you.
I really appreciate that. Thank you. Okay, with any, anything else?
No, no future agenda item, but before we adjourn, I think we would be remiss, I know that Commissioner Ziegler is, he's gonna kill me, but I'm gonna say it anyways, I know he, we're aware that he has not applied for, you know, for the next round of planning commission applicants, so we're gonna lose Commissioner Ziegler to this body, and we would be remiss, I think the city and the staff, as well as residents of Brentwood, would be remiss if we didn't thank you for your eight years of service. So, thank you very much, and I appreciate it.
Thank you, Commissioner Ziegler. That being said, I'm gonna entertain a motion for adjournment?
Utter.
Okay, we got jokes, okay. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Have a good evening, and I'll see everyone in the new year. Okay. And I won't take this, I'll leave it.